Good evening. The regular City Council meeting of December 11th will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Recording in progress.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? Is he online yet? He's online. We'll wait for him to respond later. Councilmember Saffordan cannot be here today. Well, we're not sure. Councilmember Revell?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Thank you.
And I am here, Clerk Mendoza. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Burns and Mayor Biss.
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. We begin with my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are none. Next on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No announcements tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
We only received one email from Rabbi London. That email is in your inbox.
Thank you very much. We now move to public comment. This evening, there are exactly 45 people requesting to speak, so by City Council rules, everyone will be given one minute. As always, we begin with those who signed up on this sheet and then move on to those who signed up online to speak in person. The first speaker will be Tricia Conley, who will be followed by Lauren Branch, and then Amel Zee.
Good evening. Tricia Conley, second word. I'd like to thank the Equity and Empowerment Commission for bringing the draft regarding a call for a ceasefire in the Israeli-Palestinian conflict for discussion at the November 30th meeting. The commission meeting shows us all so much of the work that still needs to be done here in Evanston. Some people suggested that the commission is unclear what equity is, and some speakers added disrespectful, hurtful, and derogatory statements to a commission that is co-chaired by two black women. It is clear that some members of our community are unaware that some on the commission are from marginalized groups and know what inequity and oppression can look like. On October 12th, the Evanston community received an email from Mayor Biss that ended with this statement: "But there can be no progress toward justice or peace if we are willing to turn a blind eye to the killing of civilians anywhere. Ask me. Tell us all. Are we going to turn a blind eye by not having a resolution?" Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lauren Branch, who will be followed by Amel Zee, and then Husam.
Similar to the last speaker, I'm here as a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, a concerned neighbor, and most importantly, as a human being. I'm here to implore you to reintroduce the ceasefire resolution. The federal government has done nothing but pledge increasing loyalty to supporting this genocide and ethnic cleansing, so it falls on you, the leaders at the city and state level, to do what is right: to stand up, say "not" in our name, and say "not" with our tax dollars. The United States is the only nation who voted to veto the United Nations ceasefire resolution the other day. The Biden administration just bypassed Congress to send more bombs to Israel. Over 20,000 civilians have been murdered, including 7,000 children. You have the power and responsibility to pressure your colleagues into ending their support for this massacre and illegal occupation. And I repeat that last point: illegal occupation. Step up, do your job to protect human rights, and do what you must to make a ceasefire happen now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Amel Zee. Sorry. The next speaker is Amel Zee, who will be followed by Husam, and then Kamran Sidai.
We need to start looking at facts and recognize that 20,000 people have been murdered by Israel, and the majority of the deaths are civilians and children. This is a fact, and it's pretty clear that civilians are Israel's main target. The United States is complicit in this genocide. These are our tax dollars funding this genocide, and you have the power to make a difference. If you value human life, you would support a ceasefire. If a ceasefire in the existence of Palestinians makes you uncomfortable, you need to rethink your morals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Husam, who will be followed by Kamran Sidai, and then Patrick McWilliams.
Good evening. This is Husam, the U.S.-Palestinian Community Network. The Equity and Empowerment Commission meeting here last week was a representation of the racism and the white supremacy and anti-blackness of the Zionists in this community, who are openly cheering the mass murder of 20,000 Palestinians in Gaza on the West Bank. Evanston is supposed to be a bastion of progressive thought and values, so this council needs to support the two black women, Darlene Cannon and Carla Thomas, from the Equity and Empowerment Commission, who have come under vicious attack, and also support the resolution calling for a permanent end to the U.S.-endorsed Israeli genocide against the Palestinian people. And Mayor Daniel Biss, you consider yourself an anti-racist, so you especially should not be on the side of racists and Zionists. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kamran Sidai, who will be followed by Patrick McWilliams, and then Dan Blyer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kamran Siddiqui. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I want to speak in favor of the ceasefire resolution. The fact that this is even up for debate is disgusting and embarrassing, right? This is--and history will remember those who stood in opposition to genocide. A ceasefire is a bare minimum. The United States was the lone UN Security Council member to vote no to a ceasefire resolution last week. Do we really want to be on the same side of history as one of the most murderous empires in the world? The underlying problem here is illegal Israeli military occupation of Palestine and ongoing ethnic cleansing that has been going on since 1948, in fact, before that. The Chicago area has the highest concentration of Palestinians in the country. Look at the demonstrations all over the world. The people of the world stand resolutely with the Palestinian people, and we should as well. Do the right thing, council members. Do the right thing, stand on the right side of history, and support this resolution.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Patrick McWilliams, who will be followed by Dan Blyer, and then Karam Otman.
Along with the other speakers who have spoken here today, I'd like to urge the reintroduction and passage of the resolution from the Equity and Empowerment Commission, calling for a ceasefire in Israel's ongoing slaughter and genocide in Gaza. As others have said, it's the least that could be done at a moment like this. This is the moral question of our time, and that question is, which side are you on? Are you on the side of the bloated, hypermodern military that's pummeling Gaza, whose stated military objective is to kill as many civilians as possible in order to enact collective punishment on a people already occupied and blockaded in the world's largest open-air prison? Are you on the side of those that drop bombs on hospitals and mosques, on homes and orchards? Are you on the side that keeps children as young as 14 in prisons for throwing stones? Which side are you on? And I know there's also the question about the jurisdiction here, something halfway around the world, but we who live in this country that funds it, we all have a duty to stand against this genocide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Blyer, who will be followed by Karam Otman, and then Spencer Stern.
As a child of Holocaust survivors and a resident of 35 years, I believe all of us in the room want peace. We want peace at any cost, and if we would have Hamas release those prisoners today, there would be peace amongst all of us. It is not Israel's intention to create genocide, to have killings. It is their job to release them there at war. The truth of the matter is this Economic and Empowerment Committee unfortunately has its jurisdiction and purpose with the stated goal of within Evanston. It is terrible what is happening within Israel, but what about the other issues around the world? That's happening now within Russia, within Syria, within Yemen, within Sudan, around the world. Unfortunately, we can't start resolutions that have to do with only Israel. We have to take--if we want to do this, we should do this to every country around the world. You can't consider that Evanston accepts this resolution because it's ridiculous for us to think only that we should get involved with only people that are in Israel and not around the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So let me ask. I tend to be lenient with allowing applause and people showing support to one another. I'll continue to do that. I also want to ask everyone in the community to show respect for one another, and if you disagree with someone who's speaking, that should not result in behavior that tries to interfere with their right to be heard. So applause will continue to be welcome, but let's not boo each other or shout each other down. The next speaker is Karam Otman, who will be followed by Spencer Stern, and then Eric Ramos.
Hello. I'm here to urge you to vote for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. There is a genocide happening to the Palestinian people by the Israeli government. This and the occupation of Palestine has been happening long before October 7th, in fact, for almost 75 years. Your feelings of the ceasefire resolution creating a divide in the community does not overcome the facts or the reality of what is happening in Palestine. Do not fail the Palestinian people and allies. To our two allies on the committee that stand with us, we are here with you. The Zionist efforts and your removal will not work. They can't get rid of everything and everyone who do not want to stand on the wrong side of history alongside them. Free Gaza, free the West Bank, and from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Spencer Stern, who will be followed by Eric Ramos, and then Ray Friedman.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Spencer Stern. I'm a resident of the 7th Ward. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I think one of the key issues here with the resolution is the manner in which it was written. It's inaccurate, it's one-sided, it's riddled with factual errors. If you asked any single person in Israel right now, they would want peace and they would want the hostages back. The approach that's taken here with this one-sided, misguided resolution does nothing to forward that effort by the people in Israel and certainly the Jews here and a lot of the people here in Evanston. The fact of the matter is, if there is something reasonable put forward, I think a lot of people would get behind that. This is not--one more thing also, this is not a racial issue. If the people that wrote this document were like me, white, married, heterosexual males, I would still be very much against it. This has nothing to do with the authors who wrote it. It has everything to do with the content in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask one last time. I want people not to shout each other down, not to boo one another. Again, I'm happy to be tolerant of positive feedback, but we can't be booing each other. The next speaker is Eric Ramos, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Hi. My name is Eric Ramos, and I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm here to speak in support of a ceasefire resolution. The people of the world see it plainly, and so do numerous bodies of the UN and every international human rights organization that has reported on it, including Israel's own B'Tselem. Israel is an apartheid state carrying out a genocide of the Palestinian people. I'm going to read a piece of one of those reports from the United Nations Human Rights Office to the High Commissioner. For those who haven't done their research, there's today in the Palestinian territory occupied by Israel since 1967, a deeply discriminatory dual legal system, political system that privileges 700,000 Israeli settlers living in 300 illegal Israeli settlements in Israelism in the West Bank. Living in the same geographic space but separated by walls, checkpoints, roads, and entrenched military presence are more than 3 million Palestinians who are without rights, living under an oppressive rule of institutional discrimination, without a path to genuine Palestinian state, but the world has long promised is their right. Another 2 million Palestinians live in Gaza, described regularly as an open-air prison, Israel's words, without adequate access to power, water, health, or a collapsing economy, and no ability to travel freely to the rest of Palestine and the outside world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
If folks, as you're called, just want to line up between folks, I think the mayor gives three names at a time.
We get one minute? That's it? Good evening, everyone. I'm not here to talk about the Middle East or Gaza. Once again, I'd like to talk about the budget for a minute. This was in Evanston now, today. Evanston City Council is scheduled Monday night to adopt 2024 budget, in which the revenue falls 22 million short of expenses, with the record spending total 435 million up almost 10% from this year. Council members plan to close the revenue gap by burning through revenues built up during the pandemic, but they will face severe challenges maintaining the spending pace in future years as these reserves run dry. Back in October, city managers proposed budget called for a 7.9 property tax increase. That has since been withered down to 1.1%. Managers' budget proposal also called for even more overall spending, an increase of 13% from this year. Among the proposals under considerations would wipe out all of--we need to get control of our spending way, way, way too much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this concludes the list of people who signed up on this sheet. We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Robin Gilson, who will be followed by Annette Braden-Rozier, and then Alice Berry. So again, Robin Gilson, followed by Annette Braden-Rozier, and then Alice Berry. Is any of those three individuals here this evening? If not, we'll move on then with the next people on the list. Robin Brown, who will be followed by Newland Smith, and then Leslie Williams.
Hi. I attended the Equity and Empowerment Commission meeting on November 30th. While I intended in support of the commission's draft of a ceasefire resolution, I knew that others in the community would have concerns, questions, or feedback for the commission because it was a draft. Unfortunately, I did not hear good faith, concerns, questions, or feedback. I heard accusations and attacks. While I am disappointed that anyone would oppose a statement that sought to express a collective desire to cease the fire that is being waged against the Palestinian people, I respect citizens' rights to share feedback. However, the vitriol directed at this commission and the subsequent efforts to investigate and disband the commission are inappropriate and antithetical to the community's stated values. I still imagine a world in which we can come together to share perspectives, ask questions, and offer feedback. The resolution was not divisive, but the response certainly was. I look forward to seeing the next draft of a ceasefire resolution.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Newland Smith, who will be followed by Leslie Williams, and then Lynn Pollak.
I'm Newland Smith. I'm a resident of Evanston since 1963, except for a two-and-a-half-year stay in Glenview. Mayor Biss and members of the city council are right to speak in favor of a call for a ceasefire in the war between Israel and Hamas. Yes, 17,700 people in Gaza have lost their lives since October 7th, but I wish to speak about the life of only one, namely Rafat Aliar, aged 44, English professor at the Islamic University of Gaza, who with his brother, sister, and her four children were killed by an Israeli airstrike five days ago in Gaza City. Rafat, in teaching English, also exposed his students to the literature and struggles of the civil rights movement, the black liberation movement, as well as his love of Shakespeare and poetry. His final poem, "If Up Must Die, You Must Live," has been translated into over 260 languages. Stop the carnage. Call for a ceasefire, so that Rafat's students may live.
The next speaker is Leslie Williams, who will be followed by Lynn Pollak, and then Andrew Ginsburg.
So several of us are going to read our statement, kind of Seder-style, to make sure that we don't run out of time. This is a statement that's been signed by 140 members of the Evanston community. "To the Evanston City Council and Mayor Daniel Biss, as members of the Evanston community, we are writing to express our support for the Equity and Empowerment Commission and their efforts to oppose a ceasefire resolution to Evanston City Council. We ask that the Evanston City Council consider a resolution in support of a ceasefire, and we condemn the attacks on the EEC and that their efforts to introduce such a resolution have been derailed by Evanston residents and officials. We are shocked and grieved at the outpouring of vitriol launched at EEC Chair Darlene Cannon and Member Carla Thomas, two black women, simply because they advocated for a ceasefire, and at the hostility Evanston residents and officials have displayed towards Palestinians, both at the last EEC meeting and more broadly. At the public meeting on November 30th, which was called to discuss whether the commission ought to propose the resolution to city council, members of the EEC were demeaned as ignorant, unintelligent, as supporters of violence, and as anti-Semitic. Community members called for their censure and even for the dissolution of the extremely important commission."
Thank you very much. Now Lynn Pollak, followed by Andrew Ginsburg, and then Valerie Papillon.
Violence that we have seen in Israel and Gaza over the past two months is unfathomable. The loss of Israeli life on October 7th is devastating, particularly to members of our community who have loved ones in Israel. The subsequent Israeli bombardment of Gaza, in which more than 16,000 people have been killed so far, reflects a wanton disregard for human life that we must condemn. International human rights organizations and UN officials have called Israel's actions in Gaza genocidal. If we cannot condemn genocide, then we cannot call ourselves a progressive community. A ceasefire resolution reflects a commitment to the value of all human life. Thursday's meeting did not reflect the values of community care, open-mindedness, and equality that Evanston prides itself on. One objection to the resolution is that it does not directly address Evanston-specific issues, but what that meeting made clear was how this issue is discussed has real impacts on the way people of color are treated in our community.
Thank you very much. Next is Andrew Ginsburg, followed by Valerie Papillon, and then Heather Sweeney.
The only public statement the city of Evanston has made in response to the current violence in Palestine/Israel was to condemn violence perpetrated by Palestinians against Israelis. The city has been silent on the immense violence carried out by the State of Israel against Palestinian civilians. This sends a message that the lives of Israelis matter and the lives of Palestinians do not. A failure to call for a ceasefire and to condemn all loss of life in the region is unacceptable does, in effect, contribute to existing inequities. We support the idea of a more narrowly tailored resolution, but only if it is in consultation with Palestinian experts. Community input is about listening to all members of our community, not just those with the loudest voices. The process of reworking the statement should be about making it reflect the values of our community, not silencing its condemnation of Israeli violence nor its righteous call for peace. We can and should take a stand against violence in all its forms. Thank you.
Next speaker is Valerie Papillon, who will be followed by Heather Sweeney, and then Renee Sutherland.
We are gassed to hear that there are attempts to serve the EEC with an ethics complaint. This is a continuation of the city of Evanston's pattern of weaponizing legal procedure in order to silence marginalized voices in our community. There is nothing unethical about calling for peace. This legal attack on the EEC and particularly on its members of color is racist. Furthermore, the anti-Palestinian sentiment we are confronting in our community at this moment is also racist, and it must be condemned as strongly as antisemitism and Islamophobia. We firmly and unapologetically stand in support of Darlene and Carla and their right to bring this motion to the commission, and we will not allow racism to derail the work of the EEC. There is nothing unethical or illegal about sharing the truth of Israel's long apartheid regime in occupied Palestinian territories. Passing a ceasefire resolution would not merely be symbolic. When the federal government ignores the will of the people, one recourse we have is to act through our local government.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Heather Sweeney, who will be followed by Renee Sutherland, and then Brittany Topora.
A Reuters poll released on November 15th shows that over 2/3 of the American public supports a ceasefire, and yet only 61 members of Congress have called for one. We are proud that our own Illinois Senator Dick Durbin was the first senator to call for a ceasefire, and that Evanston Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky has called for a ceasefire extension. Yet it is shameful that so few of our elected representatives have followed their example. That's why community members in Seattle, Atlanta, Raleigh, Detroit, and Oakland and other cities have voted for ceasefire resolutions, why the Chicago Teachers Union voted in support of a ceasefire, and why more than 48 Chicago City Hall staffers have signed a letter to Mayor Brandon Johnson and city council urging their support for a ceasefire. We are thinking globally and acting locally. The only moral and right action is to demand an end to the killing of children, women, and men from Gaza to the West Bank to Israel and to value Palestinian lives as much as we value Israeli lives. While we understand that discussing a ceasefire may cause pain, we must acknowledge that failure to do so also causes pain.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Renee Sutherland, who will be followed by Brittany Topora, and then Jean Fries.
Like many people, I've been disappointed by elected officials whose statements haven't called for the protection of Palestinian people who are being killed in their homes and on their streets and at their hospitals. Several weeks ago, Mayor Biss, you saw fit to send us all a statement where you said it was troubling to see people and organizations speak out against the mistreatment of Palestinians if they didn't condemn what Hamas did in the way that you wanted to hear it. Using your position of power to criticize Palestinians and allies who talk about the horror of what is being done to them, the unjust, ongoing oppression of Palestinians, and now genocide in Gaza. The Equity and Empowerment Commission brought a draft of a resolution calling for an end to the killing of Palestinians and Israelis. They drafted a resolution asking for a ceasefire, and that resolution wasn't perfect, and I don't think anybody said that it was perfect. It's okay if that commission isn't able to pass a resolution, but they can and should have meetings where they and community members can work together to address inequity and the treatment of people here locally.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Brittany Topora, who will be followed by Jean Fries, and then Ira Smith.
I am here in support of the Equity Commission and the ceasefire resolution. I am deeply saddened that so many in this community cannot fathom and do not strive for a world where Palestinians can be allowed to live, to be free, to drink the rainwater that falls from the sky, to grow up, to grow old. I don't think it is hard to say that over 20,000 innocent civilians is too many, but our city does. I don't think it is divisive to ask for a ceasefire. I think it is divisive to continue to slaughter children. I do not want to live in a community where it is safer to support an ethnic cleansing of a people than it is to ask for a ceasefire. But in Evanston, the only people who have been censured, targeted, and punished have been those requesting an end to violence.
The next speaker is Jean Fries, who will be followed by Ira Smith, and then Simone Isbellanda.
My name is Jean Friesy. I live in the 8th Ward, and I'm here to show my support for the Equity Commission and their bravery in bringing forth the ceasefire resolution last week. The vast majority of Americans, particularly those who can see their own oppression mirrored in the oppression of the Palestinians, are calling for a ceasefire and justice for Palestine. Yet our government, right here in Evanston, won't listen. I am ashamed that only some in our community are allowed to control the narrative, but that's white supremacy for you. In addition, I am appalled at the blatant anti-blackness being hurled at some of our commissioners. It's painfully obvious and crystal clear what is going on, and I am disgusted.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ira Smith, who will be followed by Simone Isbellanda, and then Paul Farand.
Good evening. I'm Ira Smith. I live in the 7th Ward. While I completely disagree with the perspectives offered within the petition that resulted in this discussion, I am not in the business of judging the intentions of its writers and certainly not their sincerity. This body is being asked to take a position regarding a subject in which the world has been un-- been unable to reach agreement over thousands of years, let alone the last 75. An excerpt of the petition cites human rights organizations and UN officials as having called Israel's actions in Gaza to be genocidal. Regarding the United Nations, the report cited is not an official position taken by the body. It is a viewpoint expressed by a group of individuals appointed to report to UNHR with a very narrow purview related to conditions being experienced on the ground. Their assessment and use of the term genocide is inconsistent with the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide adopted in 1948 after the torture and murder of 6 million Jews, which is an official position taken by the UN.
Thank you very much. The next speaker...
I'm sorry, what was that? No, I'm going to ask, hold on. So, I'm going to, this is, so, this is my, this is the last, this is the last time I'm going to make a request. I'd like, I'd like to request, I'd like us, I'd like to request order in the chamber. I'd like to, I'd like to request order in the chamber, and I want to, I'd like to request silence for a moment. There is no possible good that can come of people shouting one another down, shouting at one another, heckling one another. The, the endpoint of that would be damaging to the well-being of the community and damaging to any cause that anyone is hoping to advance this evening. So, one last time, I'm asking everyone, there's been a lot of applause, there's been a lot of support, I think that's productive. I'm asking all of you to refrain from attacking one another, shouting one another down, heckling one another. That will only set all different causes that one might be hoping to advance tonight back. Thank you. The next speaker is Simone Isparanda, who will be followed by Paul Farand, and then Stephen LeKind.
I think it's very interesting that there's very little mention of the hostages, and the, at the end of the day, the Hamas mission statement is armed destruction for the state of Israel. So try to negotiate with someone who decides that they want to murder, rape, and kidnap people who are part of your family. Hamas knew what it was doing. It entered into a war, and people die in war. This is not genocide. Look it up in the dictionary. It's not colonization. Look it up in the dictionary. So the chance of...
I just got called, chief.
Every, please stop. I'd like, the City Council will stand at ease for a moment. I'd like to ask everyone to take a minute. I'd like us to turn the temperature down in the room. I'd like us to stop shouting one another down. I'd like us to stop attacking one another, which is, I can assure you in the strongest possible words, counterproductive. We're just going to stand at ease for a minute, and I'll call us back to order, and you will be next. Is your name Mr. Farand?
LeKind.
I'm sorry. Okay. You'll be next when we come back to order. All right, the December 11th meeting of the City Council will come back to order. I just want to quickly read from the public comment description that's published in every City Council agenda. Public comment is intended to foster dialogue in a respectful and civil manner. Any person who makes such remarks or utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disturbs, disrupts, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a meeting shall, at the discretion of the mayor or presiding officer, be barred from further participation during that meeting. Again, I am very flexible. I know the part about being loud, the part about having signs that is elsewhere in this, I have no problem with any of that. I think it's fine if people want to encourage one another, but if we continue to have people attacking one another's comments in a disruptive way, I'm going to have to begin enforcing these rules. I want to thank everyone who signed up additionally, so we'll go back, we'll continue going through the online sign-ups, and then when those have completed, we'll return to the in-person sheet that now has, has now been further populated. But we now continue with Stephen LeKind, who will continue his remarks with 35 seconds left.
My only comment is, is that when you rape, murder, and kidnap civilians, you start a war. People die in war. The Saudis killed 100,000 Yemenis last year with American-made weapons. I don't hear anybody talking about that. When you kill people, and you kill their families, and you start a war, civilians are going to die. You reap what you sow, and Hamas wanted this, and they're getting it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Kennedy.
Paul Farand.
Oh, sorry, Paul Farand, go ahead.
First of all, everything that was just said sounds exactly like what the Israeli state and the Israeli military has been doing since 1948 to the Palestinians. I'm part of, I live in the 8th Ward. I'm urging Mayor Bliss and the entire council to publicly call for, or to call for the ceasefire resolution, and to publicly call for an immediate ceasefire to stop the genocide of the Palestinian people in occupied Gaza. As of December 5th, 61% of Americans support a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, 76% of those were Democrats, 57 independents, 49 Republicans, yet only 11% of Congress has called for a ceasefire, and I think that's just, officials in general, it's been very low. While our families in Evanston safely and peacefully celebrate the holiday season, the World Health Organization warns more Palestinian children will die from disease than from bombing over the, than from bombing over the coming weeks and months. Your silence makes you complicit with the genocide of the Palestinian people. Please represent a majority of the Evanston community and call for an immediate ceasefire.
Very much. The next speaker is John Kennedy, who will be followed by David Sutherland, and then Moon Goldstein.
Okay, on a different subject, as all of you know, I've been working on the budget these past months. I've generated a lot of questions for staff. I would like to take a moment and compliment the staff for their cooperation responsiveness to my questions and probing's, and especially City Council, or City Manager Stowe, who has been open to public input, and, you know, basically wanted to foster transparencies. But during these, I understand that the staff will be presenting this evening a path to bring the tax levy increase to zero. How this has been accomplished, I'm sure, is a bit like making sausage, but the point here is that the council and the city should take a winner's lap. All right, you've held the tax levy down now for three years. That's moving Evanston a little closer to being affordable for everybody. During the past few months, I have grown to understand that the budget process needs to be guided by a stronger set of policies that are set by the council. These policies would not only guide the departments on how they propose and justify their line item increases, but how the key assumptions are made, such as vacancy rate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Sutherland, who will be followed by Moon Goldstein, and then I believe Alice Berry, who was called earlier, is here.
Hello, my name is David Sutherland. I use pronouns he/him/his. What's there left to say in one minute? But I'm in solidarity with those who are calling for a ceasefire resolution, particularly those sitting on the Equity and Empowerment Commission. Taking a stance against genocide shouldn't be controversial. Let's be on the right side of history. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Moon Goldstein, who will be followed by Alice Berry.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Moon Goldstein, and I am a Jewish, proud ally of the Palestinian liberation movement. For too long, Jewish identity has been co-opted by misplaced Israeli nationalism in our community, and had baseless claims of antisemitism lobbed not only at Palestinian activists, but Jewish allies and allies from around the world. I am speaking directly to the claims of antisemitism against this commission that are completely baseless and unfounded, and to the members in this meeting that would weigh more heavily your misplaced loyalty to Israeli nationality over our collective faith and Jewish history is disgusting to me. I too am the granddaughter and great-granddaughter of people who survived pilgrims and the Holocaust, and to leverage our history and collective trauma against a Palestinian people who are experiencing something that I can not only equate to what my ancestors experienced, but that in some ways has surpassed it, genuinely is disturbing to me.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alice Berry.
Alice Berry, 9th Ward. I applaud the Equity and Empowerment Commission's courage in drafting a ceasefire resolution. I support the two black women on that commission who drafted it. I'm in favor of a ceasefire in Gaza, and of this City Council passing a ceasefire resolution, as cities and labor unions and many others have done across the country. Thousands of children have died in Gaza. None of them committed acts of terror. None of them took hostages. None of them chose Hamas as their leaders. Children have no way to escape the bombardment. The bombardment must end now. Thank you.
We, we now return to the, the new sign-ups here, beginning with Leila Zayed, followed by Lauren Hamilton, and then Shannon Sullivan.
I'm sorry, everyone has one minute to speak. I mean, you guys are here so you guys can listen. This is not nice. It's not respectful. I mean, we can, we can give her more time. We can say we can take a break.
Please, please proceed. You have one minute.
Hello, my name is Leila. I'm from the U.S. Palestinian Community Network. For those reluctant to call for a ceasefire, to call for an end to this genocide, I ask you, how would you feel or react if you were in the shoes of the Palestinians? And I, I don't, okay, if your house is being blown to bits, if you had nowhere to go home after this meeting, how would you feel? If your family was literally bombed and blown to three separate pieces, one person's body, are you guys okay with that? Is that, is that something you'd be okay with? And then to sit here, privileged as we are, and to say, this is okay, and this has to keep happening. Calling for a ceasefire and initiating this bill is a start to peace, but it does not justify the last 75 years of this genocide. The Nakba, the Palestinian genocide, started in 1948, and is still continuing to this day. It's been 75 years. So I ask you to think about human beings to children that are being blown to bits, and I ask you to consider, would you want to be one of those people that were also blown to bits?
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lauren Hamilton, who will be followed by Shannon Sullivan, and then Daniel Walstrom.
As an educator in this community who is reminded every day of the power of our young people, I want to commend the Equity and Empowerment Commission for modeling what it means to be brave in the face of vitriol and entities that are counting on your hopelessness, on your fatigue, on your backing down. I have had young people tell me over these last several weeks that they too feel scared to openly stand in solidarity with the liberation struggles of Palestinians. They are watching how we, the adults who care for them, navigate this moment and have seen this Palestine exception alive and well in our community. We can release statements uplifting our values for justice and equity. We can paint Black Lives Matter on the avenues, host marches and races against hate, convene a reparations committee and an Equity and Empowerment Commission. We're all good as long, as long as we don't talk about the brutality of the occupation of Palestine. When our children ask us what we did as we witnessed massacres, nonstop bombardments, starvation, mass burials, babies turned to ash, infants abandoned in their beds to rot, what will you tell them? Will you tell them you stood on the side of our collective humanity, or that to do so was too complicated or divisive? Children should not have to beg us in their second language to give them a chance at life. We owe Gaza our endurance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Shannon Sullivan, who will be followed by Daniel Walstrom, and then Dave Trippell.
Hello. Racism has a lot of negativity connected to it, shame, anger, fear, and many people allow their defensiveness to close their minds. They don't see themselves as racist. I don't see myself as racist, which means they are unable to notice their internal bias. But the truth is, the US is a country born out of the genocide of Native Americans. There is racism permeating our very core. We are all racist, but the truth is racism is just a thing, like diarrhea. You don't choose to have it, but you do. But if you ignore it, instead of taking the steps to make it better, you will let it control your actions in regrettable ways. Over 7,000 kids have been murdered in two months. That's over 100 kids a day. With our tax money, if that doesn't upset you, ask yourself why.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Daniel Walstrom, who will be followed by Dave Trippell, and then Imani McFadden.
Hello. Thank you for taking my comments. I want to say that I think it's very clear what's happening. I think if Israel cared about its hostages, it wouldn't be bombing them. I think instead, we're seeing just indiscriminate carpet bombing. I don't think we should be bombing hospitals. We've killed, I don't know how many healthcare workers now, 250, I think, doctors have been killed. We shouldn't be targeting, you know, reporters. I just feel like, you know, it's not very complex. I think it's just kind of, you know, murder. And I took a note to, to, you know, do no harm, and I want to protect as many lives as possible, and I think I, you know, want your support moving forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dave Trippell, who will be followed by Imani McFadden, and then Sarah Amin.
My name's Dave Trippell. I've been a citizen of Evanston for 67 years. I was brought up to be a Zionist. I love Judaism. I'm not a Jew, but I think my father was a wonderful Zionist. He believed in it. He bought me Israel bonds. He bought me, he had trees planted in, in, in what I now call Palestine for years, long ago. But I believe now that if I were to still be a Zionist, I would be a psychopathic person. I would be a psychopath and a sociopath, because I have learned better now that I have grown up. And this is making me so mad to see people in this city not knowing what's happening. International humanitarian law obligates the Palestinian people to resist and fight against the genocidal Zionist occupation of Palestine. They have to do it!
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Imani McFadden, who will be followed by Sarah Amin, and then Andrea Delgado.
I would like to pass my minute back to the previous speaker. Thank you.
Hamas did a brilliant strategic attack that humanitarian law requires them to do. If you don't understand this, you are also what I afraid I would have been had I not become an anti-Zionist. Years ago, not that many, maybe 10, I joined the International Jewish Anti-Zionist Network to learn how to be a civil human being. And I think it's absolutely disgusting for me to be here in Evanston and see what's happening to this commission that is a wonderful thing, and they must be able to pass this resolution. At least, that's the least we can do in this city, the very least.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sarah Amin, who will be followed by Andrea Delgado, and then Marla Isaacs.
Hello, I'm here to tell you all to reintroduce and support the ceasefire resolution. I implore you all, rather, to support, to support a ceasefire resolution. There are some of us in this room who are calling for an end to genocide, to the genocide of the Palestinian people, and there are others in this room who are calling to continue the slaughter of Palestinians. Over 20,000 Palestinians have been slaughtered. I need you all, everyone in this room, to listen. I need you all, everyone in this room, to listen to me right now. 20,000 Palestinians and more have been slaughtered by Israel. This does not include the Palestinians that are still under rubble, the Palestinians whose bodies, whose limbs have been blown apart and can no longer be identified. Listen to me. Look at me when I am speaking. Get off your phones. Get off whatever you're looking at right now and listen to me. Palestinian people are being slaughtered. There is an ongoing genocide by Israel. Israeli settler colonialism is the problem. Please support this resolution. Have morals. Be a human. Like, it is insane. I know my time is over. It is insane that we are even in this room right now calling for an end to genocide.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Andrea Delgado, who will be followed by Marla Isaacs, and then Dima Hamilton.
Sorry, I almost tripped back there. Thank you to the Equity and Empowerment Committee for giving me this time. The events of October 7th did not happen in a vacuum. The occupation of Palestine has been an imperial project for over 75 years. Palestinians face systemic violence day in and day out, and this has a name: apartheid. We've seen this before. The least that we can do is join the Palestinian resistance, resisting this colonial power for over 75 years, and call a ceasefire, and support a ceasefire. The oppressor cannot demand peace when the oppressor is the one that's creating this violence. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marla Isaacs, who will be followed by Dima Hamilton, and then, forgive me, this is a bit difficult to read, Mamen Ali Fap.
Hi, I'm Marla Isaacs. So I'm here to just say that I'm very confused and perplexed that anyone would be against not killing innocent people, innocent children, innocent women, innocent families, and that they would uphold the idea of land being taken from a people that wasn't their original land. This is not a... This is a humanitarian issue. The people who now want to take this land and are slaughtering thousands of people is not just. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dima Hamilton, who will be followed by Mamen Ali Fap.
Hi, my name is Dima Hamilton. Thank you for this time to speak. I am up here because I went to the last meeting, and one of the arguments was this resolution for a ceasefire, the proposal to discuss a resolution for a ceasefire, was told us as this is not an Evanston issue and is beyond the scope of the committee. When I'm sitting and I'm watching coworkers and committee members being doxxed and silenced because of their stance for humanity just to stop the indiscriminate killing of innocent men, women, and children is beyond appalling and actually shows why this is such an important issue that the city of Evanston actually takes a stand on. We can't be a city of diversity, a city of equity, a city that values life if we can't even take a stand to hold our own community to a courageous conversation that honors perspectives and honors the humanity of everybody in this community, not just the people who have systems and power behind them.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, and again, I want to apologize for my difficulty in reading this. I believe it says Mamen Ali Fap.
Well, I want to say I live, my life, feel, and believe in everyone here believing the United States is the most justice country in the world. But right now, as we see, they're supporting the genocide, and this is not really true for humanity. And I want to ask everyone who's here to ask yourself, if someone kicked you out of your home and killed your children, how are you going to feel about that? Even if the social media will support this person and just keep supporting them, how are you going to feel about that? So I just want to say for everyone who's supporting the genocide, think back again, and we're here for justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now go to the online portion of the public comments. I may need your assistance here. Luke, the first online speaker will be Robin Gilson, who will be followed by Annette Braden-Rosier, and then Simone Isbellanda.
Oh. Hold on. Okay. Unable to...
You're unmuted.
Oh, hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay. I'm so sorry. I was caught off guard because I thought I was speaking before and now. Anyway, I'll be quick. I thank you very much for letting me get a chance to just say thank you to the Equity and Empowerment Committee for doing something so important and so empowering to the people of Evanston, especially the Jewish people like me, who do not feel empowered with our voices against what Israel is doing to the Palestinians right now. And just thank you very much for calling for violence to stop and murder to stop. That's really what we all want, I think. And yeah, thanks. I really appreciate it. We should all be...
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Annette Braden-Rosier, who will be followed by Simone Isbellanda, and then Brian Benson. It looks like Annette Braden-Rosier may not be in the Zoom, so we'll move on with Simone Isbellanda, who will be followed by Brian Benson, and then Jeremy Venada. Okay. Sorry, Simone Isbellanda is also not in there, so we'll move ahead with Brian Benson, who will be followed by Jeremy Venada, and then Elizabeth Smith.
I just would like to say I am in favor of our city putting forth the resolution calling for the ceasefire in Gaza. I'm in favor of our city or anyone doing anything in its power to bring about the ceasefire. Our local government should stand up and say to the federal government that this is wrong, that our government should stop its support and funding of these human rights violations. The city can add its voice to the majority of our country who believe this should stop. Other cities around the country are calling for the ceasefire. The more that do, the more our national representatives will listen. Our city should not stand by and do nothing. Our city should not be afraid to stand up for what's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeremy Venada, who will be followed by Elizabeth Smith, and then Christine Jeremy Venada may no longer be in the Zoom, so in that case, we'll move ahead with Elizabeth Smith, followed by Christine Loftquist, and then Lilia Perkey.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Smith, a Second Ward resident and a cultural anthropologist of the Middle East for over 20 years. District 65 enrolls almost 6,000 students today, including my own two Arab, Muslim, Black children. Imagine then this total number of 6,000 children of Evanston slaughtered. Every District 65 school empty. Every family of every child devastated. This is the current situation in Gaza and Israel, where as of last week, the number of children killed in Gaza since October 7th was at least 5,500, which has increased since then. And based on Israeli newspapers, the number of Israelis under the age of 18 killed on October 7th is at least 50 children, if not more. This makes for a conservative estimate of 5,550 children dead as of last week. I urge Evanston City Council to adopt a resolution immediately calling for ceasefire and end the ongoing murder of children.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christine Loftquist, who will be followed by Lilia Perkey, and then Mike Vasilko.
This is Christine Loftquist. Good evening, council members and mayor Bess. My name is Christine Loftquist, and I'm a 20-year resident of the Sixth Ward and a proud mother of a Muslim son and recent ETH graduate. I am here tonight in support of the work of the Equity and Empowerment Commission and to remind my fellow citizens that Islamophobia does have local repercussions and is not just an international issue. I remember tonight the life of six-year-old Wadia Al Fayume, who was recently murdered in a Chicago suburb, much like our own, because he was of Palestinian descent. I remember tonight Ishan Kinan in Ali, three promising young men and university students, two of whom are U.S. citizens. Their parents sent them from a Quaker school in Ramallah to the U.S. to be safe. However, they were shot and seriously wounded over Thanksgiving weekend because of their Palestinian descent. One will never walk again. Their lives matter. Palestinian lives matter too. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Lilia Perkey, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Sebastian Knalls.
My name is Lilia Perkey from the Fourth Ward. I am here to call for the demand of a permanent ceasefire now and an end to this genocide against Gaza. The lie that you are anti-Semitic if you don't support Israel is what is keeping this genocide going. Israel is an apartheid regime, and the U.S. is supporting it by funding bombs to Israel. The U.S. is allowing the genocide of Palestinians. We must act now to demand a permanent ceasefire. To not do so is complying with Zionist mindset. Ceasefire now, and from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Sebastian Knalls, and then Callie Benson-Williams.
You know, everything I had planned to say hails in comparison to what almost every one of the previous speakers has had to say, so it's really admirable and just want to congratulate that group, especially Darlene Cannon, who is such an honest person, would never do anything that is contrary to goodwill. So I just want to thank them, and I'll end my comments there. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sebastian Knalls, who will be followed by Callie Benson-Williams, and then Christine Escobar.
My name is Sebastian Knalls, and I'm representing Community Alliance for Better Government. There have been calls for dismantling the Equity and Empowerment Commission following the discussion of a ceasefire resolution for the Israel-Palestine conflict. Punishing members of the commission or terminating the commission itself would have negative impacts on our community. Tackling issues that deal with diversity, equity, and inclusion leads to difficult and uncomfortable conversations. The ceasefire resolution was no different. Palestinian and Jewish residents express sentiments of not feeling safe or welcome in our community. Without the Equity and Empowerment Commission to address those concerns, we cannot move forward. The comments made by some of the commissioners questioning their intelligence, along with those booing Palestinians advocating for the end of violence, are not conducive to building stronger community relations. CABG encourages dialogue that is constructive and collaborative and fully supports the continued work of the Equity and Empowerment Commission. We, as a community, must create a ceasefire resolution that condemns Hamas's October 7th attacks, anti-Semitism, and anti-Palestinianism while calling for the end of the indiscriminate killing of civilians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Callie Benson-Williams, who will be followed by Christine Escobar, and then Rachel Jury.
I am reading a statement from my rabbi, Brent Rosen, tonight because he cannot be here. My name is Brent Rosen. I am the rabbi of the congregation Sedex Chicago and a longtime resident of Evanston's Seventh Ward, and I am taking this opportunity to urge the city of Evanston to speak out on the tragic violence that is continuing to unfold in Gaza. The scale of this violence is reaching unimaginable proportions. Almost 18,000 Palestinians have been killed, including over 4,000 children. More than a million people have been dispossessed from their homes. Whole families have been destroyed. Tens of thousands of people have been injured, many of them grievously. Scores are lying literally under rubble with no one able to rescue them. Israel has cut off all electricity and water to this tiny strip of land, this open-air prison that has been under a crushing blockade since 2007. As an American Jew, I am grieving deeply over those who were cruelly murdered by Hamas and in the ongoing fear for the well-being of those who were taken hostage on October 7th. But there are rapidly growing numbers in my community who refuse to use our pain as a pretense to inflict collective on the Palestinian people. The response to grief cannot be the creation of more grief. War crimes can never justify more war crimes. Collective punishment will not bring anyone to safety. It will only cause more grief for Palestinians and Israelis alike. If there has ever been a historical moment that demanded a response, this is such a moment. It is a time of deep moral reckoning for us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christine Escobar, who will be followed by Rachel Jury, and then Jessica Winiger.
It was disturbing to see members of the community recently seeking to censor, humiliate, and discredit Black leaders, Darlene Cannon and Carla Thomas of the Equity and Empowerment Commission, of which I myself am a commissioner. Some are calling to dissolve the EEC because the commission attempted to merely discuss a council resolution on the Israeli-Palestine conflict. We should all question the nature of calls to censor and abolish the sole municipal group advocating for the equity and empowerment of marginalized peoples in Evanston. The deliberate targeting of Cannon and Thomas, attempts to discredit them, remove them from positions of authority, positions of leadership in the community, is a repeated pattern of racist abuse we have seen before in Evanston. As an Evanston resident and a woman of color, I fully support my colleagues Darlene Cannon and Carla Thomas's service on the EEC Commission, and I fully support a ceasefire in Gaza.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rachel Jury. The next speaker is Rachel...
Hi, I'm here.
Wait, I'd like to request order in the chamber so we can continue to hear from folks. The next speaker is Rachel Jury, who will be followed by Jessica Winiger, and then the Reverend Dr. Michael Wonderlich.
I'm assuming you can hear me. I hope so.
Yep, we can.
Okay, great. I want to thank the aldermen from the Ninth Ward who responded to my previous email, and I want to offer that we are having different conversations in Evanston. One conversation has to do with Jewish identity and Jewish hatred. Does the city council want Jews to be a welcome community in Evanston? Being Jewish is an ethno-religious identity, meaning that Jews come in all races with family backgrounds from countries across the globe. Some Jews, myself included, are conditionally raised as white. The whiteness is in quotes because it would very easily be revoked. That does not mean that Jews in America or Evanston don't experience real Jew hatred or at the same time, and at the same time, experience privilege. One way that that hatred manifests itself is through vandalism and swastikas and cheering of the killing of Jews and Israelis. Another way is when Hamas calls and asks to destroy the country of Israel or when people call for "from the river to the sea." A second way that is sometimes harder to identify Jew hatred is through an unfair treatment of Israel with resolutions like the one-sided ceasefire resolution or a simplification of identity that calls all Jews or all Israelis oppressors. When Jews say that something like the proposed ceasefire is an example of anti-Semitism, they are met with questions and hostility.
Thank you very much.
I hope to be able to live peacefully in Evanston as a Jewish family without fear. And if the city is going to venture into these conversations, I hope the council will do the real work to learn about multifaceted Jewish identity, geopolitical realities in the Middle East, and the real threats facing the Jewish community.
I would like to request order in the chamber. Thank you very much. This is the last warning. We're nearly at the end of public comment, and I'd like to insist on order in the chamber. The next speaker is Jessica Winiger, who will be followed by the Reverend Dr. Michael Wonderlich, and then someone who signed up just as Erin.
My name is Jessica Winiger. I'm a Third Ward resident, and I've been a professor of Middle East Studies for over 25 years. I'm hearing a lot of factual inaccuracies from opponents of the ceasefire resolution, so I would just like to provide the Evanston community with the scholarly consensus on Israel-Palestine. First, the government of Israel is committing acts of genocide as defined by the vast majority of genocide experts. Two, according to the vast majority of Israel-Palestine scholars and scholars of apartheid in South Africa, Israel is an apartheid state. Three, Israel is enacting collective punishment on Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank, as recognized by international law experts. And lastly, modern history of the Middle East shows that extreme U.S.-Israel-sponsored violence produces blowback. So peace in the Middle East and in the U.S. depends on ending this disproportionate violence and ending the Israeli occupation. Evanston should not stand idly by while the largest U.S.-backed genocide in the modern era takes place before our eyes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be the Reverend Dr. Michael Wonderlich, followed by Erin.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm a 26-year resident of the Third Ward of Evanston, and as a person of faith, my faith tells me to always seek... faith tells me to always seek for justice, for the welfare of the poorest and the least among us, and that as people who have been blessed in our life, we are called to aid those who are being abused and perpetrated upon. My fear is that by not allowing this Commission to at least bring this resolution to a debate, that we are stifling our democracy within our city. I would ask that we support a call for ceasefire and that we approach our federal government to ask them to finally begin bringing pressure to bring about a lasting and true peace in the Middle East. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The final speaker is someone who signed up only as Erin, who I do not see in the Zoom at this time. If you are in the Zoom, please make yourself known. All right, that concludes public comment for the evening. Councilmember Reed with a very quick comment.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Biss, and thank you for everyone who joined us today to share their really impassioned, pleased for this council to take up some meaningful action. And I'm also a member of the Equity and Empowerment Commission. I could not attend that meeting because I hold a regular ward meeting on that night, and that was a special meeting, and so I had to keep my ward meeting. But I want to very quickly share both my screen very quickly. And, oh, well, that's covered up. And I don't speak Hebrew or Arabic, but for those in the room who do, hopefully that is an accurate translation of, you know, particularly the Hebrew, I'm sorry, the Arabic version, which is actions are more eloquent than words. And I do think it's important for the Evanston City Council to take action in a way that is meaningful and that we can make a difference here. And I intend for us, I think the most meaningful thing that this body can do that will impact the lives of Palestinians and Jewish folks alike is to double our investment in our Refugee Resettlement Fund. And tonight, with our budget, I plan on making that motion for us to do that, because regardless of, you know, if a ceasefire were to happen tomorrow, there are millions, there are hundreds of thousands of people across both Palestine and Israel that are likely displaced and that are displaced. And I hope that Evanston continues in its history of being a welcoming city, and I think by doubling our Refugee Resettlement Fund, that will create a meaningful avenue for the city of Evanston to take action here. And so I support that, as well as taking up further action that comes before us.
Thank you. This brings us now to Special Orders of Business. I just want to share with the council, we have a long and complex agenda ahead of us with, you know, extraordinarily important items on it. After that, we're going to have a long and complex discussion and closed session as well. So I just, I want to ask people to be as respectful as they can about how much time, how much work lies ahead of us, because I think it would be really a serious mistake if we paced ourselves poorly and wound up giving inadequate attention and frankly, kind of mental capacity for those issues that might come at the end of the evening. With that.
From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free!
Girls, girl, you're right! That's why I want those girls to speak!
With that.
I want all the girls around! But you don't want to speak forever!
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. At 7:34 PM, the city council resumes its regular December 11th meeting. Just two quick items of housekeeping. First of all, would the clerk please add councilmembers suffered into the role as of the.
Recording in progress.
Would the clerk please add councilmembers suffered into the role as of the 7:34 PM resumption of the meeting? Second of all, I just want to say a big thank you to our public safety personnel, who did an extraordinarily professional job of treating protesters with respect and keeping all of us, including themselves, safe, and allowing us to now do the work of the people of Evanston, which is what we were elected to do. So I want to say a tremendous thank you. I don't know that our police department expected that. I shudder to wonder what fraction of the number of officers on duty would wind up here, but we thank you very much, and we appreciate, again, the obvious professionalism with which you approached your responsibilities. With that, is there a motion relative to item SP1?
I'll move item SP1, local motor fuel tax increase to six cents per gallon.
Do you want to, do you want to move the suspension of rules that was recommended?
Oh.
Some moved.
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Harris, I believe, moves to suspend the rules so that this item can be considered for both introduction and action this evening. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion requires the, receives the required unanimous support, and the rules are suspended to allow for this item to be considered for both introduction and action this evening. Councilmember Reed, now would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I move item SP1, local motor fuel tax increase to six cents per gallon.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage for action of ordinance 118-0-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries. An ordinance 118-0-23 is passed.
I will move item SP2, ordinance 82023, the 2024 budget ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 82-0-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I don't know if someone else was planning on doing this or had discussion with staff, but I think there is, understanding there is agreement amongst the council to eliminate the property tax, the need for the increase in property taxes, and substitute that with a transfer of funds from our general fund reserve.
Councilmember Reed, let me just put pause on you, and I think staff has a very, very, very brief presentation on this exact question, and then we'll go back to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, the members of the city council. Yes, we have just a couple of slides about the changes, and you would see these are the things, changes to the revenues and expenses, which are reflected in the ordinance with you. 400,000 community responder program expense, we have added that. City manager contingency budget went down by 50,000. I think we had a couple of questions about the contingency budget. Motor fuel tax, which you would see that at 140 to 60, depending on whether we go with the January 1 or February 1. 250,000 in investment income as the interest rates continue to stay, you know? They have been talking about the rate reduction, but even today, we are right around 5%, 5.5%. So I thought that, okay, it would be safe to add another 250,000 as an additional budget investment income. Reimbursement for ETHs for the police, so we added that. And then, yes, you mentioned, Councilmember Reed, the additional 252,000 would come from the general fund balance reserve to make the city portion of the tax levy flat. And this is how we have kind of, what do you call it, the match. We have individual numbers on the second slide, I think. What change? Original budget changed from 449 as an expense. Obviously, vacancy, which we discussed like a few weeks ago, brought down. The big one was the CIP spending, which went down by 13.7 million, and a couple of other items. You see that the big item, which you passed, I think 1.5 million from Good Neighbor Fund to the general fund, and obviously, which helped a big win to kind of bring the tax levy flat. And so the new number is $435 million. In terms of original budgeted revenues, around $424 million. Obviously, as we reduced the CIP, there was a corresponding reduction in the geo bond amount of $12.4 million. And a couple of things you see, which I talked about, general fund money getting from Good Neighbor Fund, $3 million revenue coming into the Good Neighbor, use of general fund reserve went up, ETHs, we had talked about it, property tax levy, so it's a reduction. You know, originally, we had shown as a revenue now that 3.7 million is a reduction, and then a couple of small items to make up the new revenue item at $413.5 million. What do we have? The next one is, I think, the, yes, this is just focusing on our general fund. Revenue is at 133.5 million, expense 144. So overall deficit is 10 and 1/2. When we proposed the budget, I thought we proposed using around $10.3 million out of the general fund reserve. With all these changes in last few weeks, the net number is now $10.5 million in reserves. This is the kind of the picture, which pretty much kind of, yeah, earlier we showed, you know, so the general fund is showing net surplus of, in the very far-right column at the bottom, $60,000 net after we account for all the revenues and expenses. And this is the property tax levy. You would see that changes pretty flat on the city tax levy. As we came to know that library has their own power, and they are independent, their board, I think, proposed that, so we are keeping that 678,000. But in terms of city portion, you would see, in fact, yeah, we are going down because we have some reduction in the debt service side. So overall increase is even less than the library is a increase because of the reduction on the city side. And I think that's it. Or do we have, oh, yeah, this is the one, I think, the Northwestern, we had tried to put the summary right here, and if everything goes, or not, even the public benefit package, which is going to happen starting next year, we talked about that $3 million from Good Neighbor Fund, at least 1 million for affordable housing, half a million for sustainability. Right now, after 1.5 million has been transferred to general fund for the property tax money. And some of the items, yes, contingent upon, yeah, when the permit is drawn and when we would start getting the other money on an annual basis. That's it, right? So those are the kind of summary things, if we just wanted you to kind of, you know, so that you can focus on just what changed in last couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reed, do you want to?
Yes. Thank you for that. So I just sent over three amendments that I plan to make separately to councilmembers, so they should be in your inbox shortly. Small amendments, very small amendments. One being the transferring of the $252,793 from our general fund reserves to offset the need for increasing the property tax levy.
So is that a?
That is a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves to shift $252,793 from general fund reserves to, which would be used to diminish the property tax levy. Councilmember Herakakis, seconds.
I'm seeing, Hattasha, am I doing something?
I mean, in our terms, it is not a transfer, it is use of general fund reserve, it's the same part.
So just reducing the budget by 252?
Right, and that's what we have represented here, that use of the general, yeah. So we show it to balance the budget, but technically, it's still general fund. Property tax money goes into general fund.
Right, right.
We will take reserves out of the same part and use it. So we, that's why we prefer to use the word "use" of general fund reserves.
Okay. How do I rework, what did I say originally?
You said transfer.
Okay, then, use 252, I will make a friendly amendment and replace transfer with the word "use."
Is there a second? Oh, sorry, was, is there still a second, Councilmember Herakakis?
Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember Reed moves to use $252,793 of general fund reserves to offset what I expect will be a diminished property tax levy when we get to item SP3. Councilmember Herakakis, seconds. There's some discussion on this. Councilmember Newsma, you had a light on before. Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I do want to speak to this, but also.
Okay, so Councilmember Newsma, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we should, I don't think we should attempt to get to zero on our property tax. It's a gimmick. It seems like a stunt. I think in doing so, we just kind of cloak the fiscal reality that we're confronted with, is we already have a deficit budget. We are, in my opinion, properly dipping into our reserves, which are significant, so that we are not increasing the levy as much as we otherwise would have to. But those reserves are not going to be around forever at the rate we project drawing down on them. And I am very concerned about this discussion at this time next year. And if we keep our property tax levy flat this year, that means that pretty soon, at some point, the chickens are going to come home to roost, and we're going to have to raise taxes even higher at some point in the future. And, you know, if we keep them flat this year, it's a false sense of security. I would rather take incremental small steps in a property tax increase year over year than keep it flat, keep it flat, keep it flat, and take one big giant step. That's much more painful for the community and much more painful for taxpayers. So I'm not going to support this amendment. Thanks.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So just so I'm clear, these staff's proposed changes, who are not just voting on all of them, where each one has to be individually amended? I thought, just so I understand that, because I thought, I mean, I support staff's proposed budget, and I'll explain why. There's absolutely nothing gimmicky about it. Councilmember Newsma, but.
You're right. I would just clarify, if you see the title, like, changes to the revenues and expenses, these are already reflected in the ordinance. So if you make any changes and do not approve any of these things, we will have to change the ordinance, because these are already incorporated based on the feedback and emails and conversation with the council members. It could be a one or two or three, but yeah, finally, we thought that, okay, there is a kind of broader consensus about these items. So there have been, yes, but we can definitely change the numbers if the city council doesn't agree to all these items.
But otherwise, I could just move to pass this proposed.
Ordinance. The budget ordinance has already, these things are counted.
Okay, as it stands, which is what I would do. But I, but I do want to say.
Oh, so you're saying that Councilmember Reed's motion shouldn't have happened?
Right, it is already reflected, and that's why I'm waiting for it to clarify this thing.
How did that happen without a council vote?
I agree with that question. Sorry.
So, and that's why I said that these are the, what we heard, and I think, well, finally, yes, the one thing which came down to us, and when we talked to that, this couple of that, okay, should we raise the property tax by 252 after we found some of the revenues and expenses? And we thought that, okay, it's not worth, you know, I mean, it's not even 1%, you know?
No, but I want to just, like, I mean, I think Councilmember Reed asked a question that I had the same question in my mind. Did the actual, the actual ordinance sort of changed by magic subsequent to the last time it was here? Or does it require amendment tonight in order to actually have the change effectuated?
The ordinance which you have incorporates all these things. Now, if you do not agree to any of these items.
No, I, I, I'm asking a procedural question.
Right.
Okay.
Just point of order, for manager Stowe, I, I mean, I support this, right? I support this, but I do fundamentally support that once something has been before a council, the only way it should change is if council changes it. And so I don't think staff should, even if I agree with it, should make changes to the budget after it's come to council. Thank you.
It is the proposed thing. That's why I brought it up here, that, yes.
Okay, so, so Councilmember Kelly still has the floor, if you like. Do you?
Right, so nothing happened by magic. This was a lot of hard work by staff and with City Manager Stowe's leadership. A lot of work went into this, I know, over and over again. And so I do think, like, whenever we have different iterations through the budget season, we contemplate new versions of the budget. we contemplate new versions of the budget. So I, I do think it seems that this is in line. This is a, you know, a new version of the budget, I support it. I will say, you know, and I've talked to City Manager Stowe and the budget team about how I feel it could even be reduced. And I won't go on with examples, but, so I support, you know, if we want to say that that two hundred thousand is coming from the General Fund, I could show, you know, areas where I feel that we're actually overcharging right now. But I'll let it go in the name of this, just to move on with this. I mean, I think we're going to find that we're going to generate a lot more excess reserves. For example, through the allowable, I've talked about the allowable loss. I'm going to advocate for a policy going forward on the allowable loss that we, that reflect the previous two years, you know, not, not, non-paid taxes and that we, that we base it on that. So now I think we're asked, we've increased that number more than we need to. That's going to, I think, make up more than that two hundred thousand. So I think we're, this is, this is great. I think, I appreciate the hard work. I can accept that we're saying we're taking it from that fund. But Councilmember Nusma, it's not going to need to come out of that fund. We're going to generate far more revenue and other sources that it's, we're not going to need to dip into that.
Just as a point of order, I think it's already been taken care of in the draft ordinance in front of us. So Councilmember Reed's motion is moot.
I, I don't, I know that's what's.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Kelly still has the floor.
So I, so I would move to, to pass this proposed budget. But I can't, right? No?
Well, that, that motion was made, and then there was an amendment added. And we're sort of, in a jumbled way, both haggling about the procedural necessity of that amendment and also talking about substance. But I think, I think, everything that you want to have happen and more is already on the floor. So I don't think any further motions are required.
My hand is up, chair, just, you know.
Councilmember Barreto, followed by Burns.
So I, I think procedurally, I'm fine using the proposed, proposed budget ordinance. I think where it gets a little bit confusing is the fact that we did have to vote on the motor fuel tax increase in order to make it hit the zero number that we needed. I'm open to whatever my colleagues are. As long as everyone's on the same page that now that we've passed the motor fuel tax increase, that the other six pieces of, changes are in the budget. I'm, I'm fine moving the forward net. We could, unless, do you want to withdraw your motion? Not yet? Okay.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, maybe to clean it up for next time, there could have been two budgets. The one that we left with at the end of the, our previous meeting and then kind of a new proposed one based on conversation that staff has had in between that time. I mean, my thinking is, I mean, the fundamental, kind of, the fundamental roles of the city manager is to present a budget to council. So again, to clean it up next time, yeah, you could have presented what we already amended. But I think it's, it's fine if you also present kind of alternative proposed budget as well. And so I'm fine, I'm fine just, I think we've already moved that, unless we haven't. But I think we've already moved the new proposed budget. And I'm fine voting on that. If we have, and if we haven't, I'm fine, comfortable making a motion to, to adopt the, the new proposed budget.
Councilmember Wen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share Councilmember Nusma's serious concern that the drive to zero property tax increase is, I, I think, misleading the public about what the future of our budget is going to be. We looked at those, that graph, those graphs, the bar graphs earlier in the budget, and that indicated what's going to happen over the next few years. The last two years were distorted by the ARPA money. And, and so we had plenty of federal funds so that we were able to, to hold the, the tax increase to zero both of those times. But this year was a more normal year. And we have to face facts that, that we have a structural deficit. And I think it's, as Councilmember Nusma said, we are going to have to face, face the fact that we're going to have a significant property tax increase if we are unable to, that we aren't going to be able to get ourselves out of this absent that. So I'm, I'm very seriously concerned that the, we're, we're letting the public think that this is a normal course. And it, and it can't be a normal course going forward.
Councilmember Ravell.
Well, whether or not it's appropriate or needed for us to vote separately on this particular item or whether it's part of the budget, proposed budget before us, I'm, I'm glad that we are having a chance to talk about this particular item. I agree with Councilmember Nusma and Councilmember Wen. And I, I should have dug out the summary of the discussion that happened at the Budget and Finance Committee, where the Budget and Finance Committee Chair very strongly talked about the sort of structural deficit way we're operating by not increasing the property tax at least a little bit this year. And so I, I don't have to say a whole lot about this, but I, I, I am sorry that we're doing this. And I, I see that it's going to be part of the proposed budget and I will support, support the proposed budget. But I am, I'm not comfortable with this particular way we're getting to a zero increase.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to second opportunities, starting with Councilmember Reed with four minutes left.
Thank you. I didn't take it personal when one of my colleagues said it was gimmicky. But I, I think what is clear is, and I think if we really dug into it, I sit on the Finance and Budget Commission, it's not a commission, committee. I think if we really dug into it with the chair, would he, actually, I don't want to speak for him. But what I do think is, I've learned my lesson on, on that. What I do think is that what we have is not a need to increase property taxes. We have a need to generate new revenue. And, and that is the, the challenge that is before us. And so whether that revenue comes from property taxes or that revenue comes from taxes that can be more spread out, not just amongst Evanston residents, but amongst folks who use our services here, who drive on our roads, who use our facilities, the more we can spread that out, I think that the better we are. And particularly, again, we have our Putting Assets to Work study coming back in February. And I think there are going to be plenty of opportunities. So I, I don't think it's a gimmick. I don't think we're misleading folks. I think what needs to be clear to residents, and maybe the media can help us get this out there, is that we need new revenue. Whether it come from property taxes, which I don't agree with and think is aggressive, or it come from other sources. And so, so that is why I am supporting this. I also agree that, you know, potentially, there are a number of items that Councilmember Kelly has mentioned around finding savings. So I don't want to just say that we have a revenue problem. I should say that we also may be able to find places to, again, to shift that burden. So I am supportive of, of this. And I just, last thing for clarity. I do think that we should, you know, I get that staff put this before us with the amendments kind of already made. But I do think, particularly for my colleagues who don't support this, I think it's appropriate to allow them to have an opportunity to vote their conscience. And I hope that it still passes. But, but, so that's, that's where I stand on this. I think we should still make the motions to make the amendments. So if, if there is an objection, if not, I'll withdraw my motion if folks don't agree, but.
I mean, I, I very strongly agree with the point that you're making. But I don't, I think we're between a rock and a hard place because the packet is what the packet is. And I don't think the initial underlying motion should have been something different than what was in the packet and notice to the public. So I think we're sort of, I would suggest that we're sort of stuck where we are and that we make a public commitment never to do that again.
All right, so I, I, if I can withdraw my motion still, I do want to make another motion, so for stopping.
Well, there's plenty more people online, so let me go back. Or do you, do you want to hold up, you, you want to continue?
Well, if we're stopping this discussion, yeah, I'd just like to go to my next motion.
All right, so continue then.
So I want to move that.
Go ahead. It's a point of privilege. I do have one more question on this issue. And then would like to make a motion to take this reduction out of the budget, which will probably fail, but at least we're all on record.
Okay, if that's how you'd like to handle it. But before you make your motion, I'd like to make mine.
Councilmember Reed has the floor.
Okay, I, I want to move, is Laura here? Laura Biggs. So within the 2023 budget, there was a hundred thousand dollars for the Howard, I'm sorry, for the Mulford Art Park. Folks who are on Economic Development Committee know that the, the, the City of Evanston in Chicago recently worked on a one Howard project. And I would like to take the money that we originally set aside in 2023 for the, for the Mulford Art Park and transfer that over to the One Howard Plan, which would allow us, for those on Economic Development Committee, to really make some strong investments on the Howard area. I don't know if there's anyone who's not on the Economic Development Committee who needs any background information on this, but, second, all right.
Councilmember Reed moves pursuant to his email to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the, from, just from the General Fund Reserve to the capital improvement plan, to the capital improvement program for the, for the capital fund, for the One Howard Plan? Is that, that's what the email says?
Yes, either General Fund Reserve or the GO bond potential issuance, whichever fund Laura thinks is most appropriate.
Ms. Biggs.
Hi, my name's Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer.
I'm, I'm sorry, and Councilmember Wen, seconds.
So I talked about this with Councilmember Reed. We make up the budget in June or July. And we think that there are projects that are going to finish by the end of the year or get under contract by the end of the year. And sometimes there's slight delays. So there are always a few projects that get caught up in this. But we, it is currently funded or proposed to be funded with 2023 general obligation bonds. We have not yet sold those bonds. But on projects like this, we typically just reserve that that money was budgeted for this year using a proposed 2023 GO bond issue. And then we note that when it comes up for review or approval in the following year, that it did not get caught in the budget because it didn't get rolled over properly. But it was fun, proposed to be funded through this mechanism.
And so you're, we're just now proposing to actually roll it over properly?
Yes.
So that doesn't happen?
Yes.
Got it. So the motion has been made by Councilmember Reed, seconded by Councilmember Wen. Is there any discussion on this motion? I know there are three people requesting to speak, but I think they all signed up before this. Seeing, oh, Councilmember Ravell.
So are we doing the Mulford Art Park?
I am having to set my ego aside in wanting to do that project and supporting the One Howard Group. It was a community-led process. There are a lot of great proposals there. And so Mulford Art Park can wait until another time. Let's prioritize this, which I think will get us more bang for our buck.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Kelly, you want to speak on this?
I do. Yeah, I do.
So just with three minutes left, Councilmember Kelly.
Okay, it's just related bit. I understood that in order to expedite this evening, that we all had a deadline to submit. I'm not saying I'm opposed or in favor of this, but, you know, to submit our input and then to go back and forth. And, and so I, that's what I thought. And then staff, as, as a result of that, that's what they're bringing back, is a lot of conversations. Now I understand if there's something that someone like Councilmember Nusma said, but if we're, are we still in the midst of adding new items to this? I mean, just shifting money from within this, okay. All right.
All right, would the clerk please take the role on this specific One Howard Plan-related amendment?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Ravell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Barreto?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
I did not hear, did Councilmember Saffron vote? Okay, in that case, there are eight voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries, and the budget has been amended in this manner. There's still a number of people waiting to speak, with second and even third requests. And now more. So continuing first with second requests, Councilmember Nusma with three minutes and forty seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since time is a-wasting tonight, I'm not going to go through the procedural hoops to get to a conclusion we all know is coming. So I am going to move to another issue. And I'm looking at the Good Neighbor Fund coming in from the university, per the MOU with Northwestern. The three million dollars is coming in. We have already allocated a million and a half of that to reduce the property tax burden. I think that is a good idea. The other million and a half per the MOU is one million for affordable housing and five hundred thousand for the Sustainability Fund. That money hasn't been moved. So my motion right now is to move that money from the Good Neighbor Fund into those two funds. Five hundred thousand dollars into sustainability and a million for affordable housing.
Second.
And I emailed this a few minutes ago, so.
Councilmember Nusma moves to move a hundred, nope, a million dollars to the Affordable Housing Fund and a half a million dollars to Sustainability Fund, simply pursuant to the agreement relative to the Good Neighbor Fund that has already been reached. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there discussion on this motion? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Burns.
I just want to make sure that, that this council, nor any future council, has to do this every year. Because it is outlined in the memorandum itself that this money should be transferred to the, to the relevant funds. And so I, I just want to be, we shouldn't have to do this, is the point. So how do we handle that? Can we give direction to staff with this? Can I make a friendly amendment that just says, you know, in the future, just, this should be automatic? And if we need legal to help out with that, then I pose that question to legal.
I mean, I would suggest that we not resolve that question tonight. The MOU is very clear, there's no, there's no ambiguity in it. And sort of in terms of how we do bookkeeping in the future, I think tonight might not be the best night to work that out.
I think it is for me. So just, you know, assuming the council rugby is, is in the chambers today, could you respond to that question? And I'm happy to, if you need to, to look at the MOU again and respond later, I'm happy to hold this question to later as well.
I can respond to a Clayton Black budget manager. So given the direction tonight to move those funds, I think that all future proposed budgets where we receive this money will just automatically include that transfer to those funds.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first or second time. So we go back to third cracks, where there are several people, well, there's at least, well, there's several people online. We start with Councilmember Kelly with two and a half minutes left.
Okay, so I think before I attempted to move this budget, but are we still?
Point of order, just, I think we're still talking about Councilmember Nusma's motion.
Okay, so I'm going to address, well, I don't know, but I made a motion before he did, just, I think.
Hold on, hold on. You never made a motion. There was, there was a, there's an underlying motion, which is the budget, that's still sitting here. Councilmember Reed, you, did you withdraw your motion or not?
I did, not for the budget, I withdrew my amendment.
So Councilmember Reed withdrew his amendment.
Maybe I am now, I don't know.
But then another, you did, I forgot, I'm sorry. Then another amendment passed that you made relative to the One Howard Plan.
Correct.
Now there's another amendment before us made by Councilmember Nusma that I should have called for a vote on already.
Which is to?
Which is to put the million.
Raise the levy.
No, 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 no. To put the million that was supposed to go to affordable housing to affordable housing and the half million that was supposed to go to sustainability to sustainability.
And can I take this turn back after we vote on that?
Yes, absolutely. I called on you by mistake. So in lieu of my error, would the clerk please take the role on Councilmember Nusma's amendment relative to those two amounts, the million and the half million?
Sorry, writing. Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron, just for housekeeping, is no longer able to stay on Zoom. Councilmember Ravell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Barreto?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries, and the budget is again amended as previously described. Okay, now we go back to third cracks, again, now appropriately, beginning with Councilmember Kelly with two and a half minutes left.
Okay, so I would like to move this item. It's already moved, okay, it's already been moved? Okay, great. So I just want to say, I, you know, again, I would argue that I would have liked to have seen it reduced. If you really track and study the budgets over the years, there have been times, like I know during the COVID, before this term came, where the budget was increased significantly in. in order to accommodate for what was expected to be a loss of revenue. Then it turned out there wasn't one. And I, at the time, as someone who wasn't a candidate, suggested that, you know, there'd be an amendment to reduce it if revenue or after COVID. That was never reduced. So, we have had a growing budget for many, many years. There's nothing, there is nothing, you know, arbitrary about just hitting to zero. But I mean, I would argue to reduce it. So, I am glad that we've managed to get to zero. Again, there are many areas that I think I've seen from studying the budget so carefully that we really do need a lot of policy. We need a policy around allowable loss. And I've talked to staff today about going forward, looking at an average of the last two years in terms of, you know, what percent has not come through with the property taxes and basing it on that. We need a, you know, policy around things like our credit card. I still think our credit, we should figure that out maybe in the parking system. We can save money there. There's a lot of areas where we can develop policy vacancy rate. We should have a policy rather than arguing about, you know, depending on what the vacancy rate is. So, so this is not, this, you know, again, the 200,000, I think that's not even, I think we can, we can say that. And I think it's fine that staff has said we'll take it from there. But I guarantee we won't need to. There's plenty of other areas where I think we're going to see our, our revenue exceeding what we're proposing and our expenditures less. And, you know, in terms of a deficit, we have generated the revenue that was proposed. We're not coming in, it's not like, oh, we really overshot it. No, it's just that there's been some over expenditure in certain funds. And fortunately, we can cover those with our surplus budget. So, just to raise it, just to raise it because it's not sustainable, that's presupposing that those graphs, that's presupposing budgets into the future that we haven't even agreed on. So, so anyway, so I ask everybody to exercise sensitivity and awareness of our residents and to hold this levy flat this year. Thank you. And I, again, I want to express appreciation to our staff and Luke Stowe for all their hard work and sensitivity about the high cost of living in Evanston and really working to figure out how to assess this budget in a way that we don't have to raise the levy. Thank you.
Continuing the third cracks, Councilmember Reed with 45 seconds left.
Yes, I have one more amendment. As I mentioned earlier this night, this evening, I do think it is important for Evanston to stand in its values and do what we can here in our small corner of the world. And we've had, we, in 2023, I think the council adopted Refugee Resettlement Fund that has been quite successful. It has enabled us to help, I wish, oh, the director's still here? I don't know, you don't have to, but it has allowed us to help a number of migrant families in ways that we would not be able to with our traditional funding. Give Councilmember Hadda Gaddis and I an opportunity to get closer. And I think we, given what's going on in the world now and the continuation of the migrant crisis that we have in Chicago, Chicago is expecting 50,000 migrants by the end of the year. I think they're currently at a little over 20, some odd thousand. Evanston, I don't think, has yet taken on our fair share. And I think it's important for communities like Evanston, for suburban communities, to step up, both for our migrants from Venezuela and other places, but also from Palestine, Israel, and others, other conflicts around the world. And if we don't, I think it leads to, it helps fan the flames of xenophobia, of hatred in other communities that feel like they're taking on more of the burden than we are. So, with that, I make a motion to increase our Refugee Resettlement Fund by $50,000. It is currently $50,000 to continue our work addressing both the migrant crises all over the world and helping folks resettle here and become a part of the fabric of Evanston.
The motion fails for lack of a second. Councilmember Burns, it's, sorry if I'm getting this wrong because of the Zoom. Did you have your hand up?
I did, yeah.
Yep. Go ahead, you've got still three minutes left.
Okay. No, I just wanted to comment on, on the budget. I am someone that believes 100% that we have a structural, you know, budget deficit. I've said before, I think our, our budget increase this year has been misstated. As I've said, you know, many times before, every number, every percentage that I hear, the papers quote, and also some of my colleagues and community members includes money that is not being provided for by taxpayers, including ARPA, which was provided by the federal government. And IAP gave loans that will be paid for by our wholesale customers 100%. It also includes increases in salaries that came out of negotiations with our unions. I don't think there's a community member in Evanston that doesn't think we should, that it's important to commit to the agreements that come out of those negotiations and that we keep fair wages and a healthy work environment for our employees that suit up every day and do the service to the city. But I do think, and so why I think the budget increase has been misstated and that this budget is essentially the same as in years past when you, when you kind of exclude all the items that I mentioned, plus there are others that have a hole that I can go down. But I do think we have a structural budget deficit of about $10 million. I don't think we're going to reduce our way out of that necessarily. I support many of the items that Councilmember Kelly wants to discuss in Finance and Budget Committee early 2024. I know the, if we were to pass on the parking-related, parking ticket-related, credit card fees to, to, if we were to pass those on, that that would result in, and I think I was, staff told me today, either 100, 140,000 or something like that. So, I don't think those proposals get us millions. I think they get us a few hundred thousand, maybe. It'll make some difference, and I appreciate her efforts. But I don't think it'll result in millions. And so we do have a structural deficit that we haven't figured, determined how to meet. I agree with Councilmember Reed that, that what we need to do is generate new revenue. I think as a default, most cities say, oh, well, you do that from property tax. Duh, but we don't have to. You know, cities do that. It's probably one of the more reliable sources of revenue for cities, but it's not a given, it's not a default. There are other things that we can do. And I think it's important to at least take a look at those, not only amongst ourselves as council, but to start early next year with community engagement, bringing them into this decision. And before we decide what to do for next year, which is why I support holding the levy flat for this year. And I also, and I talked about this earlier on in the term, I think we owe it to the city to go through a zero-based budgeting process or something like it. And so I've been, you know, working with the city manager on this. I think it's something that he supports. He can speak for himself in that he has found a way to do this next year, either working one department at a time or multiple departments, whatever we can manage. But I think going line item by line item, starting from zero, or starting from zero and really making sure that where we understand why our budget is developed in the way it is is going to help us find reductions where there are reductions to find. But again, I'm under, I understand we have a structural deficit. I think there are some things, including zero-based budgeting, that we need to do first before we raise the levy. We also need to bring the community early again next year into this discussion so that they can help us decide how we want to generate revenue to address the structural deficit. Thank you, Chair, that's all.
Thanks very much. Now, seeing no further discussion, would the clerk take the role? So, this is the role on the budget. And again, it's been amended. It's been amended a few times, but in relatively modest ways, once to correct those, the million and the half million, and once to, to address the One Howard issue. Would the clerk take the role?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, Ordinance 82-0-23, as amended, passes. This brings us to item SP3, which, as I understand, will require an amendment.
Yes, I move item S.
Sorry, so, Mr. Black, do you mind just?
I move item SP3, Ordinance 83-0-23, City of Evanston 2023 Tax Levy.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of Ordinance 83-0-23. Councilmember Wen, seconds. Clayton?
That one's good. Slide two is fine. So, as we discussed on the budget ordinance, all ordinances and tax levy ordinances were revised to include the seven items on this list. So, it does not need amended.
Understood, thank you.
As it is in the packet.
Councilmember Reed?
Oh, okay, well, in that, I'll just celebrate that. I do think it's, I think it is important that this council and it's, that this council has held the tax levy flat for the last three years. I think over the next year, as Councilmember Burns alluded to, I am going to be more committed than ever, which is a lot of commitment, to finding sources of revenue that spread out the burden and hopefully mean that we don't need to raise property taxes again next year. Now, I do agree with Councilmember Newsma and Wen and Revelle and others that at a certain point, it is irresponsible to not raise the tax levy. I don't think we are there yet. I don't think many cities are there yet because it's such a convenient tool. But I think after next year, certainly going into the 2026 budget, I think it'll certainly be necessary that we begin to raise property taxes again. But I hope over this next year and leading into the 2025 budget that we will also not have to raise property taxes and will find alternative sources of revenue. And I just, very quickly, I didn't get to say it on the last item. I think this is all related in that I also want to highlight that this council has made the, and thanks to the work, particularly of Councilmember Burns and many others, we are making the largest investment in affordable housing that this council, I think, has ever made on an annual basis. And that's important. And at the same time, we are making that new investment, we are keeping the property tax levy flat, really adding to affordability for housing here in our city. And so I hope we can continue down this path. I think we all should commend ourselves, whether or not you fully agree with the route that we're going down. It is, for a lot of folks in our community, it is extremely meaningful. And I hope that we recognize that. So, thank you to this council.
Would the clerk please take the role on Ordinance 83-0-23?
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Newsma? Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and Ordinance 83-0-23 is passed.
I will move Ordinance 86-0-23, Special Service Area Number Six. And if I may, just move all of them?
Yeah, I recommend multiple. I think you skipped one already, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will move SP4, 84-0-23, General Assistance Tax Levy. Ordinance 86-0-23, Special Service Area Number Six Tax Levy. Ordinance 87-0-23, Special Area, Special Service Area Number Seven Tax Levy. SP7, Ordinance 89-0-23, Special Service Area Number Nine Levy. And then SP8, Resolution 55R-23 through 70R-23, Debt Service Property Tax Abatements.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the following items, Ordinance 84-0-23, Ordinance 86-0-23, Ordinance 87-0-23, Ordinance 89-0-23, and Resolutions 55 through 70-R-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and all the items previously read are passed. This brings us to item SP9. Is there a motion relative to item SP9?
I'll move item SP9, Approval of City Council Goals.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we accept and place on file the City Council Goals as described in the packet. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the goals are accepted and placed on file. I want to thank everybody, both up here and across our staff, for working on that over the course of many, many months, really. I know it was a, at times painful process, but it was real important as well. So, thanks to all. This brings us to the consent agenda. The only item that I know for certain needs to be removed is item HS1, which we will not be hearing this, this month because of a family issue. Are there other items folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda this evening? I have A11 and P1.
HS2?
HS2. So, so far, I have A11, P1, HS1, and HS2. Anything further?
And I will also, I don't want to scare anyone, but remove item A3.
There's the frightening A3, and then the hopefully non-frightening A11, P1, HS1, and HS2. Anything further? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I will move the consent agenda minus items A3, A11. Am I skipping something? P1, HS1, and HS2.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the exception of the following five items, A3, A11, P1, HS1, HS2. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda is passed.
I'll move item.
I'll make the motion on APW items.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move items A11 through A12 with the exception of A11.
Go on. Wait, what?
We got A3.
A3.
And I'm sorry, A3. With the exception of A3 and A11.
That's already done. So the consent agenda already passed.
See what happens when it gets late. It's not even that late.
All right. So A3 is before you, councilmember.
I will be happy to move A3. Approval of the special event Evanston Folk Festival presented by Out of Space.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the special event Evanston Folk Festival presented by Out of Space. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I, as we had this in APW, I support this. You know, exciting. I am just curious for staff, what triggers an event like this coming to council? Why is council approving this and why is this not a, you know, kind of more perfunctory approval that staff would make?
Good evening, members of the city council. So any event that goes over, I believe it's 150 at the lakefront, has to have a special event committee approval sent to council. So we approve it initially in the special events committee, and then we bring it to city council for approval. So that would even be on any pub, any public way in a park. If it rises to a certain level, if there are street closures that are involved, then yes, we do have to bring it before council for approval.
Thank you for that. And so the threshold under our current ordinance is 150.
And it depends on the lakefront or whether it is in a park. So all of it depends on where the event is held.
So even, you know, if I'm having a wedding at the lakefront, 151 people, okay, I support this. I do think it is worth us taking a double look at some of those rules and whether or not something like this needs to come before council. You know, maybe the threshold should be set a bit higher. And, but I'm not saying it doesn't need to be approved. I think that we can allow our staff to approve an event of 200 people or 300 people. So this may be something that'd still come to us, but I do think it's worth us taking a, taking a look at, a look at this. And I'd really be interested to understand how other communities handle these kinds of special events, particularly those under, you know, 500 people.
So I'll tell you, based on the special event permit application, it is lakefront events of 150 participants or more due to the high usage of the lakefront parks, which generates associated environmental health and life safety issues. Non-lakefront park events of 250 participants or more. So, well under 500.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the event is approved. This brings us to item A11. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item A11, resolution 93R-23, authorizing the settlement and release of all claims in Czech CU versus City of Evanston.
Second.
And I will call council's attention to an email from Corporation Counsel Ruggie, sent at 5:40 this evening, which contains the corrected version of that text.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of resolution 93-R-23 as, and draws our attention to the fact that it was amended per an email received by council earlier today. Councilmember Reed seconds.
And just as a, for the record, the settlement amount is $5,500.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Corporation Counsel Ruggie, can you remind me why we are in the public, why we're paying Czech CU, anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Reed, Mayor Bess, members of city council, Alex Ruggie, interim corporation counsel. This was a lawsuit filed several years ago pertaining to a FOIA. The city and the plaintiff worked out the FOIA issues administratively after the lawsuit was filed, or I think right, right before it was filed. But then this is the settlement recommended by outside counsel to disperse of the lawsuit.
Yeah, I'm specifically curious what the, what did the city do incorrectly that are, that is now leading us to give away a small amount, but taxpayer money?
This was several years ago. I think it was just an oversight. So if I remember correctly, staff thought certain emails were confidential, but they had actually been shared with the public. So as soon as that was brought to the attention, they were released immediately. But unfortunately, the lawsuit had previously been filed.
Thank you.
We had some staffing shortages, and a lot of people were out at the time that knew that it was public. So it was just someone new handling the matter.
Thank you. I do just want to, this is, I think in my six, seven, whatever it is, years with the city, first time that I think I remember someone actually receiving money from the city for a FOIA request. But I just want to remind this body that that is written into the law, and we are just lucky that folks haven't been exercising this. This gentleman, this person from, what is the city? Czech CU. What is CU? Champagne Urbana, yeah. The gentleman from Champagne Urbana clearly knows his way around FOIA, and there are people who can borderline make a living doing this. And so I just want to remind us all to be, you know, really careful with FOIA and OMA as to not rack, start racking up legal bills here. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
And Councilmember Kelly? It's okay, I was waiting. Okay.
Abstained.
Abstained. Thank you.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and resolution 93-R-23 is passed.
Point of, I'm sorry, just procedurally, just our rules, councilmember, according to our rules, must vote if they are present.
Okay. What is, what is present? I'm sorry.
Folk festival, so.
No, no, this is, this is on the Czech CU.
No, sorry, you're right.
On the last.
Okay. Like I should have just paused, but two more, because I don't, I wasn't here for the discussion. But, okay, aye. Aye.
Councilmember Kelly votes aye. With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and resolution 93-20, no, R-23 is approved. Councilmember Nguyen, would you care to make a motion on item P1?
Thank you. I move item P1, ordinance 115.
Oh, wait, I see. There's a request to suspend the rules.
I'll move suspension of the rules.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of rules so that ordinance 115-0-23 can be heard for introduction and action tonight. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion requires, receives the required unanimous vote. The rules are suspended. And now, councilmember Nguyen, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, I move ordinance 115-0-23, amendment to expand the existing special use previously authorized by ordinance 81-097 for an animal hospital, Blue River Pet Care/Fox Animal Hospital in the C1 Commercial District at 2105 through 2107 Crawford Avenue.
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves passage for both introduction and action of ordinance 115-0-23. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gharis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 115-0-23 is passed. As previously said, we will skip item HS1. Who's chairing it? Human Services at this time?
I am.
Okay. Councilmember Revel, do you want to make a motion relative to item HS2?
Sure. Just a minute. Sorry here. Thank you. I move approval of ordinance 77-0-23, amending Title III of the Evanston City Code to add Chapter 35, minimum wage.
Councilmember Revel moves passage for introduction of ordinance 77-0-23. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Reed.
So, yeah, this is, this has been before us a few times. I believe there's support up here to move forward with this. I do know that One Industry reached out, which is our hospitals, to potentially, to potentially be removed from this ordinance. I don't know if we need to take that step yet. I hear the concern that they have shared, but I think if warranted or if, if it becomes, if everyone just follows Evanston, which I don't think is the case, then maybe we can come back and address it. Certainly, my understanding of their concerns is they, they already pay over this minimum wage, this 1625, but are concerned that maybe in other jurisdictions where they don't have, where they don't pay as much, might raise the wage and could cause some, some issues. But certainly, it's not an issue here. And so I'd support keeping the ordinance as is. We've debated some, we've made one amendment already, which is to increase the threshold to 100, the threshold for a large employer for 100 employees or more. And so I think we've really listened to the major concerns of the business community and incorporated those into this ordinance. I'll reserve time.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Sufferton.
Yeah, just to elaborate a little bit on the concern from our hospitals, they have increasingly numerous hospitals and clinics, et cetera, in many, many communities around the greater Chicagoland area. And their big concern is, and their, and their employees don't necessarily work day after day in the one hospital. They move from hospital to hospital. And so they're concerned about the administrative, whatever you want to call it, difficulty of tracking, you know. So Mary's at one hospital, she's at Evanston Hospital on Monday and Tuesday at one minimum wage rate, and then she moves then to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, she's at another hospital where the municipality has a different wage. And so they're, they're concerned about just the, you know, administrative headache of trying to manage all that. And they have, they have a lot of employees and they move around a lot. I don't have, I was hoping to have some actual numbers of, you know, how many people we're talking about and just how big this headache is. But they did ask to be exempt.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, I also heard from a large employer with a similar concern. And I just want to ask if staff or anyone on council met with the healthcare providers. And I would assume there may be other large employers whose starting wages already above minimum wage, but who may have similar concerns about the administrative burden and the potential for this creating significant pressure on them in a difficult hiring environment. Has anybody, has staff met or have any of the council members or proposing this met with any of those entities?
I think the best way to structure this is all first ask Luke to speak to who, if anyone on staff, has had those conversations, and then we can go to council members.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Sufferton, for the question. I did have a very brief conversation with Doug Silverstein, who expressed similar concerns that Councilmember Revel just shared a couple minutes ago. And then I think our policy coordinator did speak with Evanston Hospital folks as well. So I don't know if she would like to speak to that as well.
Good evening, Allison Leipzig, our policy coordinator. Yes, I had a similar conversation with Evanston Hospital. Not much to add on that front.
Okay. And then the second question, how would the responsibility for enforcing this fall? Would it be the city's responsibility to enforce it? And do we have staff to do that?
Mr. Mayor, can I respond? Okay, I think Councilmember Reed's going to answer that question.
Yes, thank you. This will be, you know, this will be employee initiated, just like the Fair Work Week ordinance. We're not sending out city staff to look over people's paychecks. It, you know, will have, I believe there's a requirement for the minimum wage to be posted, particularly at the large businesses, and folks will report whether or not they are receiving the appropriate minimum wage. And I believe then, if there's a claim, I believe it goes to the circuit court. Is that correct?
So walk me through the process if an employee believes that they are not being compensated appropriately under this proposed ordinance. Who do they talk to? What, what number do they call? What actions from the city does that trigger?
Councilmember Sufferton, thank you for the question. I'm not sure if all those details have been spelled out here in the ordinance, but there is a violation section. It's 3-35-12, and it allows for violations to be administered by the city. There would be a ticket written against the employer, and this would come to administrative adjudication, similar to other ordinance violations. There is also 3-35-13, which allows for a private cause of action, which is what Councilmember Reed referred to. So employees can take this to circuit court for their own cause of action. But as to a number to call to report it, I'm not sure if staff has received direction on that.
Okay. And so the burden of reporting would be on the employee who believes that they're not receiving appropriate compensation under the proposed ordinance?
That would be one way, yes.
Okay. And then to Councilmember Revel's question, how would it work if you had a person hypothetically worked a 40-hour week for the same employer, but seven hours were in Evanston, 30 fewer in other municipalities? Would the expectation be that they would receive the higher wage for the seven hours or for the entire 40? How's that plan to be administered?
I'm unsure how. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Allison.
Thanks. If I could jump in really quickly, I just want to say 33511 is enforcement regulations. And it basically just says that, like Fair Work Week, if this were to pass, that the staff would be in charge of putting together regulations. And that's something that would be, I assume, determined within the regulations put forth.
Okay. Do you anticipate that that will be an additional cost or that that can be handled with our existing staffing model?
That would be handled with our existing staff.
Okay. I mean, I would suggest that we make sure that we have this buttoned up, particularly with our large employers who already pay more than the minimum wage. I think there's a potential unintended consequences, doing more harm than good if we don't have it absolutely right. And so I would respectfully request that we make a plan to do that before approving this, because if we get it wrong, there's a potential for doing significant damage, particularly to the healthcare industry at a time where it's a very competitive hiring environment.
So just to be clear, you're, you're not making a motion. You're just sort of making, you're just, you're stating a preference.
If people want to vote for it tonight, I just would like to flag the potential unintended consequences in that this may be something that needs to be fixed later, and it's probably easier to do it on the front end than after it's implemented.
Understood. Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. So Doug Silverstein is North Shore, just to be clear on that, because I think it was presented a little earlier as if it was a different organization. So I've only been contacted by one major employee, North Shore, Doug Silverstein. And I want to be very clear that he, he made it perfectly clear that if we pass this now, that he is, that one, that North Shore, that he is in support. His concern was not necessarily if we pass this, it's if municipalities across Cook County all decide because of us, right, to, or not necessarily because of us, but that's what he emphasized on the call, were to pass not only minimum wage increases, but those increases vary from one municipality to the next, then he would have really serious concerns. And so I just, again, don't want this to be misstated or overstated. His concern was not if we pass this. It had, it also was not about wage increases generally. It was if they start to vary too much across Cook County that he felt North Shore and other larger organizations that operate in, in multiple jurisdictions would have a payroll nightmare trying to address it. But he felt comfortable with us, I think, passing this. And then as long as that we were committed to coming back, if necessary, to make modifications, in which I told him I was absolutely prepared to do. That's all, Chair. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
So this isn't a comment necessary in support or against, but I do think if there, if there are still outstanding issues, that we should certainly, if we need to get, you know, have somebody from the hospitals here to really speak to us about impact, I mean, I don't see any harm in holding this to ask that we have, I mean, what would be the harm? I just think, you know, I think just too much for moving forward on things that are, you know, well intentioned and sound good. But I think we've learned that we really need to, to do the necessary outreach to really understand impacts. So I don't see any harm in holding this to get a better sense of, of the impact on our medical providers.
Is that a motion to hold or?
Almost.
Somebody call Roberts. Okay.
My end is back up, Chair.
Okay. So at this time, no one's asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to. So at this time, no one's asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to second cracks, beginning with Councilmember Reed with three and a half minutes left.
Thank you. Look, I think we are prepared to vote this forward. It's just for introduction today. If between now and, no, it's for introduction.
Whatever you're reading is mistaken. It's for introduction.
But it is, so just to be clear, it says it's for introduction, and it is for introduction, so that's correct. Oh, sorry. The agenda says introduction, and I'm.
It's for introduction, yeah.
I mean, just to want to triple check, Ms. Ruggie, this is for introduction, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So just, again, you know, one option is to pass it, because there's going to be another crack. One option is to try to make changes now and then pass it. One option is to pump the brakes if folks want to give it more thought before taking the first vote. But just to be procedurally clear, this is for introduction. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. So I would encourage us to pass this for introduction. This has been before this body multiple times. It's been before the Economic Development Committee. I held a number of town halls with small and medium-sized business owners. I think that, you know, you mentioned earlier that, you know, one, what is the harm? Well, if we keep holding this, again, I want to make sure that we have a good six-month period for that rulemaking to take place. That is a common part of the process. We did it with the Fair Work Week ordinance. We're going to do it with this. I trust staff to come up with fair rules. I want to be clear to Councilmember Suffertin's question, you know, if someone works seven weeks in, I'm seven weeks, Jesus Christ, seven hours, if someone were to work seven hours in Evanston, they would be triggered because the ordinance says a covered employee is anyone who, in a two-week period, works over two hours. But the, you know, my understanding is, from what was communicated from the hospital folks, is, again, they pay above this minimum wage already. I can't imagine that an employee working in Schaumburg or somewhere else, wherever, Chicago, where they have, you know, the Swedish Covenant, that their salary goes down because they're working in Evanston, or they work in Evanston, their salary changes based on their location. And so, you know, I think that, you know, we can have conversations with them. Again, as Councilmember Burns noted, they are fine with the proposal as it stands now. So let's move this forward. If, in fact, Evanston, everyone starts following Evanston and doing everything we do, which I wish more folks would, then, you know, maybe we'd have an issue. I don't see this presenting itself. If you're an employee at Target, and the other large employers that we're talking about are, you know, again, the larger, big-box stores quite often, and if those folks are shifting around employees, I think it is totally appropriate for those folks, if they're working more than two hours in Evanston, receive a fair minimum wage.
There's still no one requesting to speak for first time, so we go continuing with second cracks with Councilmember Revelle with four minutes left.
Well, given that we are only voting for introduction as opposed to for action, as it says in our packet, I'm comfortable going ahead and approving it for introduction. And then it gives us time for further conversation with our hospitals before our next meeting in January.
Continuing on second cracks, Councilmember Burns with three and a half minutes left.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, one of the things we discussed alongside our council goal settings and priorities in a separate meeting was just how we can, you know, do better as a council. And I think one of those things is just trying to run efficient meetings. We emphasize that a lot. You know, when this city has concerns about an item, they don't hesitate to come out. They're not shy about it. This is an issue that the small business community was, you know, largely endorsed, or at least they felt that it was something that they could get behind that wasn't a big issue, which is why I think we don't have small businesses lining up this evening opposing it. They were clear on what amendments they wanted to see. I believe those amendments have been made. And they were clear on what items, separate of this one, they did not support. They were vocal about it. They met with us about it, and we addressed them as best as we could, their concerns as best as we could. There's only one, again, large employer that has reached out to me about this, and again, it's North Shore, it's Doug Silverstein. If there are additional concerns, you know, then I'm sure between this meeting and the next one, folks will reach out to us. But I think we need to, we need to be able to accept when an issue is not contentious and move it forward, right? We don't need to do anything that's going to create unnecessary backlogs, just because we think somebody may reach out if we give it more time. I don't think that's acting in a way, acting in accordance to what we all said we wanted to strive to do as a council, which is be more efficient with our meetings. That's all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing on second cracks, next is Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 20 seconds left.
So I think we should be careful that we don't let efficiency trump effectiveness and good policy and potentially unintended harm, because we don't do due diligence to really vet proposals. So I would like to see this held, just, and I don't, I thought Doug Silverstein retired, and there's a new president.
I believe his last day is New Year's Eve.
Oh, okay. Okay. I would just like to know that we've really vetted this thoroughly, because these are huge employers in our community. And again, I'm not saying I'm pro or against this, but I do think it's really essential, because those are huge partners in our community, the healthcare providers. So I would like to see this held and know that there's been some real thorough conversations, and I love, like, what we do with the budget. I mean, it forced me to just put a deadline. Any questions that any of us have to, like, set a deadline. We get those in so that there's time to make sure staff or council members can get those answered.
So is that a motion to hold?
That's a motion to hold.
So Councilmember Kelly moves to hold ordinance 77-023. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Suffertin, seconds. So there's been a motion and a second, which is, Councilmember Reed?
I would like to move to overturn the hold.
Councilmember Reed moves to overturn the hold. Is there a second to the motion to overturn the hold?
There is a second.
So Councilmember Reed moves to overturn the hold. Councilmember Burns, seconds.
This motion.
And is this debatable?
Yeah, is this?
Ms. Ruggie, is the motion to overturn the hold debatable?
I can, I have a tool created that can quickly tell me the answer to that.
I think there may be some recommendations up here not to debate it, but that's a different question.
If I get commitment to support the overrule, I won't say a thing.
The point is, the question is more whether saying a thing would move votes your way or the other direction.
Yep. We'll just, I'm happy to keep vamping up here while you. A motion to, a motion overturn a ruling by, is indeed debatable, or a ruling by the mayor.
Well, I mean, this is, look, this isn't a very, hold on.
I've created a.
Yeah, right. It explicitly says on Rule 18.12. All right. So is there any discussion on the motion to overrule the hold? Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I'll be brief, because I don't want to hopefully turn off any of my colleagues. But we've, there has been the discussion that Councilmember Kelly is looking for this. Went to Economic Development Committee months and months ago. We held town halls, multiple town halls with the business community. This then went to Human Services. It was there multiple meetings. It came to this body. It's been held at this body, multiple, multiple meetings. And in fact, I don't even know if a motion to hold is in order. I don't know if it was tabled previously or was held at a previous meeting, but this has been certainly held over for a number of meetings. And so I would encourage us to move forward. We've given plenty of time. If folks have concerns between now and the adoption date, those concerns can certainly be heard. And I, as the sponsor of this, I think, I hope I've proven myself to certainly be willing to, when there are legitimate concerns, pump the brakes, have the discussion if necessary. I don't think that's the case here. And so I would encourage my colleagues to move this forward to our January meeting.
So one thing I just want to say in response to that, I'm, I mean, if you want to double check, Ms. Ruggie, of course, I would defer to you, but I am strongly of the view that this hold, this motion is in order. I think the, we got to December 11th with the table that occurred at a previous meeting. I believe this is the first time there's been a proposal to hold, to hold this, so I think it is in order. Councilmember Suffertin.
Yeah, I mean, here's an issue. Westminster Place reached out to me, and again, this is a large employer that's also, has a large number of residents, that already pays above minimum wage. They don't have numbers for how this will affect them. They want to figure that out. This isn't someone who is already paying less than the proposed increased minimum wage and saying, please, please, don't do this. This is like some, a large employer that's doing something that we're trying to encourage and has a large number of employees who are already making more than what our proposed minimum wage would be. I just think it would be prudent to make sure that we understand how this would affect them. Endeavor Health was mentioned. We don't, I don't know if anybody's heard from St. Francis. I don't know if anybody's heard from other entities that may be affected by this. I don't know the headcounts at Mather or Three Crowns. But I think it's prudent to make sure that when we have large employers who are already doing what we're going to try and make everybody do, that we give them time to understand what the possible consequences for their business operations are, and that we then, you can still go forward with something that they don't like, but like, we should all know what we're doing here. And I think the argument that we need to have more efficient council meetings is the wrong direction to be looking at this. What we really need to do, particularly as it pertains to large employers, is make sure that they have a predictable business environment so that they can make financial projections. And that's the concern that was expressed to me by Westminster Place, which is in my ward, but I assume applies to other entities beyond just Endeavor Health. There are large employers already paying minimum wage who don't know what the effects of this will be on their business. I think unless there's a rush to do this, that I don't understand that there's any reason to go forward with it. And I'd also like to ask, have we at all talked to our Cook County Commissioner about having this be a county-wide thing? Because it sounds like that also would address some of the concerns that were expressed by Doug Silverstein, that having a patchwork of wage increases is less desirable than just having a blanket wage increase throughout the county. So that's why I think it's smart to hold this, so that we, again, so we get it right, and we make sure that we know the consequences for large employers that are already doing what we're going to try and compel other employers to do.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with a lot of Councilmember Suffertin's concerns, but I think these can all be addressed by voting this for introduction tonight. And if they are not addressed by the time this comes back to us, we can always table it until a further date certain at that point. So I'm ready to move on this tonight.
I remove my name. I remove my name if other folks are with Jonathan.
Councilmember Kelly.
Just, you know, a hold is for that purpose. It really, you're holding it for that purpose, and it just, I think it better ensures that what we're looking, what the council will be looking for does happen as opposed to just passing it along. So I think if you do care about these concerns that I've raised and that Councilmember Suffertin raised, you hold it to ensure that all that information, including, I think, what he just mentioned about reaching out to the Commissioner, that those are, in fact, answered, those questions and getting that information.
Councilmember Reed, your time is up, but just very quickly.
Yeah, just very quickly. My hand is, my hand is up.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Councilmember Burns with a minute forty left.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. Again, everything that I'm hearing from my colleagues is something that we all believe is important. What, that's obvious. What I'm saying is, is that at some point, it's like procedural misuse to almost by default, always move to hold something when it's unnecessary, especially when something is being introduced, which allows for more time for input. Like, at some point, we can, we need to get comfortable with just moving things forward, not for adoption, but for introduction, because there's not a lot of pushback. It's almost like we're fishing for, yeah, I've heard from this, and there might be some stuff over here. No, there is what it is. Because this has, because this has been given the time that it has, which is over several months now, people have reached out, right? I had about a 30-minute conversation with Doug about this. I'm not going off the cuff about what his concerns are. I know very specifically what they are, because I spent the time talking to him. In addition to that, he also said that they are in communication with St. Francis, and they have the same position on this issue. So I'm not saying that this is ready to move forward for introduction on a whim. I'm saying, because I've had the discussions with the one major employer at least that I'm aware of, and if there are others, the process still allows time to sort that out. But we don't always, by default, have to do things, again, that I think will, if we continue to do it, will create unnecessary backlogs. Like, yes, we need to hear folks out. We have heard folks out. Yes, we need to make sure we've done our due diligence. We have done our due diligence, which is why I'm saying, let's move it forward for introduction, continue the conversation, see what comes up, and then we'll be prepared to hold or make amendments or do whatever we need to at the next meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Reed, very quickly.
Yes, very quickly. And I just want to say that for those of you who are on the fence about supporting the overrule because of the points that were raised by Councilmember Suffertin and Councilmember Kelly, again, they've both pointed out that these entities pay over the minimum wage that we are setting. So the consequences are going to be nothing unless you pay under the minimum wage, or I should say negligible, unless you are paying beneath the minimum wage. So I would encourage us to move this forward. We can sort anything out. I think I've proven that I've been willing to be reasonable on issues like that. Thank you.
All right. Would the clerk please take the roll? And just to be clear, this is the roll on the motion to overturn the hold. So if you want the hold to happen, you vote no. And if you want the hold not to happen, you vote yes.
Councilmember Wen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Suffertin?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Hakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion fails for not receiving the required two-thirds majority, and item HS2 is held and will appear for introduction on the first January meeting of 2024. This concludes our consent agenda and brings to call of the wards.
A point of order.
Yep.
We neglected to vote on the levy for special service area number eight. It was not on our agenda. I have the, I can, it's ordinance 86-0-23 for SSA 8, and it was in the amount of $60,200.
So, or second, so moved?
Yeah, so I moved.
It wasn't on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda. It was just, it was overlooked, so.
So it wasn't on the public? Public would have no notice of this?
Well, but we have, I mean, it was in our, we, it was introduced at our October or November or something meeting.
All right. Mr. Zalmasa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Revelle, Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, members of the City Council. It was introduced, for whatever reason, that item was not transferred to the consideration agenda. So essentially, what I've been advised by the CFO is that we will book it as an expense, but there is no revenue for that particular item in 2024. It's a total of $60,000.
So where does the money come from for it, then?
Comes from the general fund, according to CFO Hattash Desai.
So you're just, so you're saying that the, okay, so let me catch up for a second. It sounds like what you're saying is that, of course, for reasons of open meetings act, this can't just be, Councilmember Revelle's motion, however well-intended, was not in order. Understood. And it's a tax levy, so you can't just come back and do it in January. So let me ask, I guess, Ms. Ruggie this, just because this seems, honestly, like an unacceptable state of affairs to me. Would it be in order for someone to move to re- unacceptable state of affairs to me. Would it be in order for someone to move to reconsider one of the other SSA levies and then on reconsideration amend it to add in this levy?
Is Hitesh still here, by chance?
Hitesh is not in the building.
I would, my question for Hitesh would be is if we're able to do it that way with the tax levy, if the ordinance can include both special service areas, I'm not sure. If we could take a brief pause, we could perhaps call Hitesh?
Council will stand at ease for a moment.
Thank you.
Okay, take two. At 9:22 PM, the city council resumes its, its meeting. To address the issue that was raised immediately prior to our pause, there will be a special meeting of the Evanston City Council on Monday, December 4, Thursday, December 14 at 2:00 PM. That'll include just one substantive agenda item with special order of business to take up the one remaining SSA levy, which I believe is ordinance 85-0-23. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I'm going to just make a motion and move forward. One colleague has agreed to change their vote on the minimum wage ordinance. And so I'm going to, I think this will take two procedural votes. So one to reconsider the, I guess reconsideration, and then the other to reconsider the hold.
You can't make the motion to reconsider. You are on the prevailing side. You are not on the prevailing side.
Oh, well, then I would ask my colleague to make that motion. I know it's a harder place, but you don't have to.
I move to reconsider.
Second. Councilmember Revel moves to reconsider the, Councilmember Revel, having voted on the prevailing side, which is to say those opposing, moves to reconsider the motion to, reconsider the vote on the motion to overrule the hold on ordinance 77-0-23. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Will the clerk take the roll on the motion to reconsider the overrule vote?
Councilmember Wen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Oh, come on.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Nope.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion carries and the vote is reconsidered. Now, would the clerk please take the roll once again on the motion to overturn the hold that was made on ordinance 77-0-23? So once again, if you like the hold, you want to vote no now. If you don't like the hold, you want to vote yes now.
Excuse me, Mayor Piss. I believe according to Rule 22.1, an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the council members present is required in order to pass a motion to reconsider.
I'm so sorry. My apologies. With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion fails for failure to reach the required two-thirds.
There's a person changing their vote, maybe.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion has failed to achieve the required two-thirds majority and therefore does not pass, and so the vote will not be reconsidered. So the underlying hold stands. We now move to call of the wards. Councilmember Wen.
Happy holidays and happy new year to everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Same here. The January 4th ward, ward meeting will be a week later than normal. It will be Tuesday, January 9, 7:00 PM, and we are going to meet at the Music Institute of Chicago. Change of venue, 1490 Chicago Avenue. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns. All right. Councilmember Sufferton?
Chair, if you can come back to me, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
No, if you can come back to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
Happy holidays and see everybody in the new year.
Councilmember Reed?
I almost want to lecture this council about poor folks who are, who are going into the Christmas season. There are people in our community who are struggling to make ends meet. The increase in the minimum wage for many folks will be the difference between being able to pay, make rent one month, being able to celebrate a Christmas or Hanukkah or whatever holiday they celebrate. And I just want us to keep that in mind. This council, well, it just was commending us earlier, for affordable housing, we are making great strides there. When it comes to the rights of low-wage workers, it seems like we can't get things together. And so, you know, I asked us, the last time this was tabled, to come back to the meeting with amendments that folks wanted to make. And it just keeps getting tabled and held and tabled and held. And we don't do that. I just don't see us doing that for items that are going to disproportionately impact our low-income, struggling residents. And so I, I appreciate those who supported it. I appreciate those who ultimately will support it. But just in this Christmas season or holiday season, Hanukkah season, I really want us to channel our values that those religions teach us and to make sure that we are truly looking out for the folks who are least amongst us. I also will say that we have, I think we're going to have a virtual ward meeting. We're working on getting the guests, potential guests locked in. So I guess I'll have that announcement on by Thursday, hopefully, but I do expect to have a ward meeting on the last Thursday of this month on the 28th at 6:00 PM, likely virtually. And we very likely will be discussing the Just Cause ordinance. And so we'll have some folks to discuss that with residents. And I invite anyone in Evanston who hasn't had an opportunity to do a deep dive into Just Cause, to come join the eighth ward meeting virtually, to learn more about it and share your thoughts. And then we also have two open office hours for the eighth ward this month, or office meetings. Those are posted on the city's website. Encourage residents and the media to, to look that up. And that is it. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Councilmember Hakaris.
Happy holidays. There will be a virtual ward meeting on Wednesday, December 20 at 7:00 PM. I'll have Parks and Rec staff talking about how to sign up for reduced water rate program and also how to sign up for Access Evanston.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Harris?
Good evening and happy holidays, Councilmember Reed. You forgot Hanuk, I mean, you forgot Kwanzaa. How you gonna forget Kwanzaa? Anyway, second ward meeting will be held December 21st at 6:30 PM at the Robert Crown Community Center in rooms B and C. And what I'm hoping is that we'll make it a dessert, where people will bring desserts to share with whoever attends the meeting. More information coming. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes, happy holidays. SIBA, Central Evanston Business Association, is having their annual holiday event at Church and Dodge. We'll be using Gibbs Morris again, as well as, we'll have a heated tent again. And folks will be outside as well. We have a lot of fifth ward vendors that are providing food and drinks for the evening. And I would imagine Clerk Mendoza and her team will be there running the tree ornament table again for folks in our community, especially our young folks. So I invite everybody to come out December 18, 5 to 10:00 PM, Church to Dodge. And then also, it's important that, I tried to do this earlier on the call, I would assume media is still present, and so I do it for their benefit, and hopefully they'll get the word out. But, you know, one, I think it's important to just, I commend everybody that came out this evening to speak about all issues, but especially the ceasefire resolution. Being on, on both sides, making a comment both from the dais as an elected official, but also as a community member up at the podium, is really difficult to, to make a comment, especially around a contentious and controversial issue, and know that either behind you or in front of you, there's people that, that, that agree with very little to what you say or all of what you say and what you stand for. And so I commend people putting themselves through that. I know it's difficult, and I appreciate you for making your position known. But I do want to, I do think it's important to correct the record. I'm using that, council member to do that. I don't like when people walk away with, with things that are not true. I think if, once people have all the information they, they need, and we share the same set of facts that people are, have the ability to make up their own decision, but we do need to make sure that we're sharing the same set of facts. And so there are some things suggested that I want to make sure I'm clear on. And if I'm not, then we'll all be better for it. And city manager, so if you can help me out with this. So it was suggested that there has, there's almost been a, either an attempt or a conversation from council about disbanding the Equity and Empowerment Commission or Committee. That is something that I have not heard from any of my colleagues nor staff. And so can you respond to that?
Sure. Councilmember Burns, if you're asking if there's been any discussion about disbanding the Equity Empowerment Commission, there's absolutely not been any discussion along those lines at all.
Thank you. That's what I thought, but I wanted you to confirm that. And certainly there's been no official action from council to do that. When I say official, I've said this before, the city is, the council is not us individually. We are council members, but a council is what a majority of us agree to do. And as we saw tonight, sometimes two-thirds of what, of what we decide to do. So the second thing is, as far as I know, there has been no, the city certainly has not filed any ethics complaint or any official complaint against any member of the Equity Empowerment Commission. Is that true? And I'm saying the city, city staffs, city council members, et cetera.
That is correct, Councilmember Burns.
Okay. So again, it was suggested that there have been, this, like, the city has attacked or tried to, has attacked a council member, or we're using, you know, the system or something like that. Like, we're using the ethics system in order to try to, against members of our commission. I would want to know if that were the case. And our manager still has said that's not the case.
Point of order.
And then, go ahead.
So I guess I would suggest that we not use call of the wards to have further kind of back and forth. Councilmember Burns, you still have the floor?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm going to use my time the way I see fit, but I appreciate the feedback. And then lastly, well, actually, that might have been it. So, yep, that's it. You called me at the end. So thank you.
Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five, Illinois compiled statutes 120/2C. I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding, regarding review of closed session minutes, litigation, personnel, and purchase or lease of property. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2C, Sections 1, 5, 11, and 21.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves the city council move into an executive session for purposes of discussions on the items just named. Councilmember Wen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 9:36 PM, the city council moves to an executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.